Call this meeting for order. He said, or, George, will you do this?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board has been meeting in closed session. And student discipline, or 4.1, no action. 4.3, we're not, okay, 4.2, no action. 4.3, no action. 4.4, no action. Section 5. All items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion, which is not debatable and requires a unanimous vote for passage. If any member of the board, superintendent, or the public so requests items which may be removed from this section and placed in the regular order of business following the approval of the consent agenda.
I would like to pull number 5.1, please. One more discussion. Item 5.0, application agreement for architectural engineering services agency, Architects for the twelve bridges high school portable relocation project. Yes.
Could you read that again?
And then I would like to pull 5.1, mine. There was an error in the fact sheet and the supporting documents, and so we are going to be bringing that back at the next board meeting. So it does not need to be added to information discussion.
Okay, 5.1, overnight, field seats, fold. And 5.1, oh, fold. Anything else? All right, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 5.1, no, and 5.1, no. We should approve.
You've got people in the hall if you want to talk a little louder.
Yeah, oh, yeah, thank you. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Um, this is a local.
Um, Miss Sten?
Yes.
Miss Owen?
Yes.
Miss Hughes?
William.
I'm sorry, Miss Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Deister?
Yes.
Scottman?
Yes.
Miss Craven?
Yes. And Miss Deister?
Yes. Motion is passed. Next section, communication from the public. This portion of the meeting is set aside for the purpose of allowing opportunity for individuals to address the board regarding matters not on the agenda. The board is not allowed to take action on any item which is not on the agenda except as authorized by government code, section 54954.2. Request forms for this purpose are located at the entrance of the meeting room. Request forms are to be submitted to the board clerk prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. However, I'm going to read this public part. In exceptional circumstances, when necessary, to ensure full opportunity for public input, the board president, made with the board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or time allotted for each speaker. Any such adjustment shall be done equitably so to allow for the diversity of viewpoints. All right, so, we'll go with George speakers. And then just to run this for record. We have a public written comment that we will add to the record that is written. Thank you. Okay. Lisa, I'm sorry, Aubrey, Aubie? Can you be, E, A, Aubie, Aubie?
Is it Kevin?
Oh, my gosh, Kevin.
Yes.
I have no, okay. There better be a Lisa in this list somewhere, or I owe you a coffee or something, I don't know, sorry about that, Kevin.
Hi, I'm Lisa. Hi, Kevin, I have three kids in the school district. I'm an assistant coach for the Lincoln High School and Polk Bridges trap shooting team. And I just wanted to kind of bring that up. The trap season's starting. I've been going to these meetings for quite a while. I've never heard it being brought up in any of the updates or anything, so I'd just like that to be included going forward in the updates when they have trap meets, if anyone places does well, anything like that. We do have a fundraiser coming up. They do, we do all of our own fundraising. It's a fun bingo night. Have your questions over here all night. Anyway, thank you all for being here. And thank you all, all the parents for being here, too. Finally, people are showing up and not the same five or six people every morning. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Travis. Okay. Gus, I forgot this one, right?
Thank you. My name is Gus Murphy. I have two children in the district. And I did write something down, but I'm going to come from the heart on this one. I've spoken to you guys at length about my desire to work harder to get the parents surveyed and hear their opinions on some of these crucial things, that these agenda items. Because, let me tell you something you already know. You represent the community at large and the parents. A lot of the people in the room tonight are already members of a union, you know, the CSEA or the CTA, with clear agendas, whatever they may be. And they have representation, right? And you're our, me and the rest of the parents' representation. Tonight, I expect that you'll hear a lot of things, like we need to engage youth, and they don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And you're going to hear a lot of those phrases tonight. But I think that I represent a lot of parents when I say that I believe parental, parents and teachers and staff all coming together is what's truly going to engage youth and create the, and again, I think you're going to hear the word culture tonight, create the culture that they need to be successful. Because I do believe 100% that educators are the most critical piece and valuable piece in any school district. And you could argue in the United States of America, they touched my life at a young age and meant a heck of a lot to me. But I do need to put in this caveat. When you start getting unions involved who take whatever it is, $80, $90 a month to the tune of hundreds of thousands of people and start funding larger projects, it just gets out of control. So as you hear what you hear tonight, please think about reaching out and surveying the parents. Tim Allen, the predecessor to Josh Reece Snyder, I'm not even going to try to find Josh in the room, but I think he's over somewhere. He, uh, Tim Allen sent a survey out to the educators that, you know, we were made privy to through Survey Monkey, and I thought that was great. It costs about $225 a month. It's my understanding, I looked at the prices for the type of service that would give three district members access. So if you took, for example, the $38,000 spent on bulletproof glass upstairs, that would fund that in 14 years, right? So it's not over, you know, it doesn't cost too much. And I realize there's some employee hours built in, too. But let me finish with this representing the parents. Most of the people in this room have been in wrestling matches, or dances, or football games. And there's a lot of parental involvement. They just don't want to come here, right? Anymore. The last two years, they did. But they're busy leading their lives and being great community members. So I think a survey is a way we can reach them. We can ask quantitative, questions that beg quantitative answers. And we can find out what they really believe. Because that's your constituents. And we need to kind of act on what they want and not well-funded unions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. Who I don't know this is first time, Chris Wyatt?
Thank you. It's a little weird being on this side, but what can I say? Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you. First, I want to say thank you for your time, dedication, efforts by serving on Western Placer, Unified School District Board. I appreciate reading your bios on the district website. You're here for all children. You want every student to have every opportunity and advantage for success. You are looking forward to serving all children, teachers and staff of Western Placer. You commented that there's nothing more important than our children's. You understand the need to help our students be ready for the world that comes at them fast. Sorry, my mouth is very dry. We must help them be ready through electives, clubs, and competitions. You want to make an impact in the lives and serve our community. Thank you for that. I ask you to trust the process. Our district is in great hands. And I, having been through eight superintendents, I feel pretty strongly about the good and the bad who have been here in the district and have completely failed our district. I can strongly and honestly say the superintendent Callahan is way beyond and much greater compared to many others. She brings me insight and approaches. She has a great team who are dedicated to our district and believe in our district. And I believe in our district what they have done, and they are in pretty great shape. Our district is in great hands. Trust that. Ever wonder why people stay in our district for years or others come to our district to serve? You aren't going to know everything in a month, let alone six or 12 months. There are rules, laws that govern the school board. They are not only to protect you, but enable people to believe in you. Nothing is worse than losing the faith and trust of your stakeholders. Western Placer is sitting, oops, do you know I went on the second page? In pretty great situation. Thank you again, and I wish it best in serving our community of 48-plus thousand people as well as all of our Western Placer, 7,500-plus students, parents, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Scott Beadie?
You want to have someone else go, wait?
Is there somebody else?
Pretty much ready to go.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah. Do you want someone else to go, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be the next person.
Okay, all right. Peter Constant?
I don't want to waste your time. Hello, my name is Peter Constant. I'm the student body president at William and Joseph University in Rockland. We would like to invite you, Jessup, to a student government, student leader, high school conference, inviting both high schools on April 14 from 1 to 4 regarding leadership principles, effective communication, team building, and small group dynamics. It's a unique opportunity to be able to bring all the high schools in the local area. We'll be inviting Roseville and Rockland School District to the conference along with a couple others to bring the community together and have high schools interact with, in the local area. Two of the keynote speakers will be myself as the president and my dad, Pete Constant, who's the chair of the Public Policy Department. I have a bunch of flyers with the information for it. I don't know how to give it to you guys. Okay, yeah. We'd be more than happy to bring as many students in as you guys have to offer. And we're super excited to be able to work with the school districts and the local high schools to be able to bring effective leadership skills to them for free and to be able to open the door for them to interact with other schools.
Is there a cost?
No, no, no cost, no cost. It's open to all students, that are welcome.
Is the board invited?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'd love to have administrators as well. It would be amazing. And elected officials. So it'd be awesome for you guys. Any questions? Are you guys allowed?
I think I asked the question I wasn't.
Okay, well, if you guys have any questions, there's the email on it, sga.joseph.edu. We're responsible, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, everybody, can I go?
Yes, Scott, you're on.
All right, thanks. Because I'm about to retire, so.
Are we just fighting it out right now?
So I just, I just can't go without, you know, telling about some of the things that I've done because the other people are the teachers. But I'm not just here for my own self-look around, guys. I'm about to take a look. I'm here actually, I have all the teachers and there's hundreds and hundreds of them. We teach with our whole hearts and knowing we're here, right? Because, you know, we labor away in obscurity and we don't win teacher of the year or anything. You know, we just do our jobs because we love it, right? So this is the kind of thing I've been doing.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt. Can you address the board? Can I ask you to address the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Teacher.
You still have your class, I guess.
That's exactly.
Thank you.
If I stand over there, maybe. So first of all, I've hardly ever taken sick days. I've gone years and years and years without taking PM days, much less sick days. Because I hate getting away from my students. I hate writing long, detailed subtitles that aren't going to get followed. It's a pandemic, it's thousands of dollars. And the better is doing outcomes because, you know, I, the sub can't do what I do. So the secretary said, you never take sick, your name never comes up. Early on, I realized that students aren't going to succeed in reading, you know, unless they have a really good library. So my wife and I was also saying we're going to teach you new books, hundreds and hundreds of books. Of all reading levels, students can have high interest, reading level appropriate curricula, cover them. I'm still using some of the reading. They've been glued back together many times. But my students succeed really well. All the students come in about where they enter, they succeed, get to third grade reading level, they read from chapter books, no matter what. And I think this department, I've written a ton of curriculum. I wrote a lot of this before the reading. What teachers pay teachers? And now a lot of it's up there. I just saw me, and filled it. Like, one of them was five-minute politics. I had a fifth grader write the word constitution without a single vowel. And I thought, I have to fix it. So I took the one half of the English dictionary that is predictable and put it into this entire program. So they learn all those really predictable rules, how to sound out three and four syllable words, how to distinguish those commonly confused words, all the theirs, right? Our, we say, that's our house. When it's our house, we say it's our house, right? It's bigger than us, we say, right? But it's bigger than us, right? My kids will say, because we're lazy talkers and we need to be like, sure. So this is what we get. And again, all the research shows that students succeed really well, you know, the reading. This is critical to success. Then we, standards came along. And suddenly, there are all these English language convention rules. And all the curriculum that was out there was just not academically rigorous, just had like two or three mistakes. And it didn't address real common second grade mistakes like spelling day with an A. So I wrote this entire thing, a couple of these problems, every single day, four days a week, all 32 weeks in a year. And it gave any second grade teacher the wrong. So this is just a fun thing that we do. It's all line drawing pictures and color. I saw a curriculum like this and said, I can do better than that. So I did. And this is the thing I'm most proud of. This is a dinosaur, you know. I call it plagiarism-resistant because elementary children think copying is writing, right? So I left out, you can see, the naming part and the telling part, the verb. I know I'm running out of time, just give me one more minute. Okay. I promise it's worth it.
I'm going to give you a minute, go quicker.
Okay, so this is a 20-page report. Take a look, you guys. It's, I, fifth graders don't do 20-page reports. Biggest thing, the pandemic came along. We just adopted ReadyNow, which is very language-intensive. And they missed two and a half months of first base, so they're way behind on the reading. So I took and put both of these entire workbooks onto the Seesaw platform, which is an online learning platform. It's kind of like a paint program, which you can upload work to you. So every single lesson. So now instead, if they couldn't read this, they could click on this and they'd hear me reading this problem to them. I did it for every single lesson and I hear it all the time. And they told me, this is really useful.
Scott, can you wrap it up in about a couple sentences?
To this, to this, to this, okay. Okay, and then finally, last thing. Ask your kid, what did they do at school? You know what they say, right? Right? So I've been writing a newsletter every single week to let them know. And I found I'm going to digitize it and do it with email. I may go a lot more detail. So anyway, those are some of the things I've done in 25 years. Autocentric songbook, I do this outside of my class. I put in a stepping stone because the teachers are going there anyway. I help with all the VO and I play electric guitar so I can do the talent shows.
Well, thank you, Mr. Beadie.
All right, thank you.
Scott, maybe don't retire.
We need you.
We miss you.
We're on report outs now. Student advisory, Lincoln High School, Arianna.
All right, about a week and a half ago, we had our basketball homecoming dance, and it was pretty successful. I think everyone that went had a lot of fun. We also had our first homecoming rally inside the gym and also the dance inside the gym for the first time since 2020. And I think everyone really, really enjoyed it. And the dance and the rally were both a huge success. Course selection for the next school year is taking place this week. Last Friday, JEMs hosted a rally that the Lincoln High School Dance Team and Lincoln High School Choir performed at, which hopefully, I think, got a lot of middle schoolers excited for high school. Last week, I'm sure you're going to touch on this, but last week, Carrie Callahan honored several staff members at LHS with their years of service spends, which was pretty incredible. And later this month, I think later this month, I'm actually not sure. There'll be a bingo night to raise money for sober grand. And that's my report.
Thank you. Polk Bridges, Claire.
All right, tomorrow's the last boys' basketball home game. varsity's playing at 7:00 p.m. into blackout. Our ASP vice president, Kelsey Curran, won athlete of the week after she upheld six consecutive games without letting the opposing team score one single shot. Yeah. Recently, students in their third-year Bible and legal CTE pathway at Polk Bridges did presentations to staff and a few board members. Myself and another student presented to Mr. Price. We acted as his primary positions and briefed him on his course of options and walked him through his views. We're also picking next year's courses later this week and apparently are adding anatomy and a CR College dual enrollment course for medicine, which is super valuable for people who want to go into a career in healthcare.
Thank you. Dana, Stella?
Hi, everyone. So the first thing I have is that our basketball team is undefeated. We're 2-0 at the moment. And we have another game on Friday. And we also have our ski trips to Palisades, which are going very, very well. It's under the Ski Duck Grant. And then we're also kind of doing some school renovations where we're painting bathrooms, kind of making them a little bit prettier and not so like boring-looking. And then we also have a school dance on April 21st. And I would just like to thank the community for everyone who has come and dropped off prom dresses and other, like, everyday clothes to the clothes closet. I made a post asking for donations. And I have never heard notifications from my phone so much. We have a whole room full of prom dresses and men's prom attire. And it's really, really great. I'm really, really grateful that a lot of people have like come out and helped support Phoenix High School because a lot of people don't. And so it's great. So, and that's all I have.
That's great, thank you. I move to the board members. Do you have a vice president?
Oh, yes, okay. This past weekend, Saturday and Sunday, I went to the rodeo right down on Lincoln. And it invites people from all over the area. And it invites an awful lot of kids that are involved in rodeo here. At grade school, junior high, high school. If you haven't been to one of these recently, you should go because it's a real gem in Lincoln. And these kids are just terrific. And it's a great show. And I think we need to be supportive of that. Then I was also happy to watch some basketball, both boys and girls' basketball. And they won some and they lost some. But everybody played with great heart in sports. That's certainly what I look for. A number of board meetings, which other people may comment on, but we had a board meeting on governance, which is basically our rulebook and how we operate. Then we had one on finance, which is how we spend the money. And finally, last night, we had a meeting in Rockland, primarily about the Brown Act and also for newer board members, of which I'm one. So it's been a good and busy few weeks.
Thank you. Number Craven?
All right, I've been busy. I did attend the governance workshop. I think it was on the 21st. I actually attended a crowd beat in Sheridan that raised funds for a camping trip for children at no cost to them or their families to be able to go. I attended a board facilities meeting with George on the 23rd. And on last, or the Friday, the 27th, Mr. Cotton, I see you. I was able to go to Phoenix and Atlas School. And I met with Principal White Cotton, Ms. Zimmerman, Ms. Zimmerman, she's counselor. And Mr. Melson, who was fabulous. He's a government econ teacher. And Mrs. Barney, who was there career in college readiness. And I got to see our very own Shelby Crane. And a lot of volunteers there at the huddle. And it was totally put on by the kids. And Shelby was the emcee, I believe, that day. So that was really nice. And they also did a FaceTime call with their basketball team when they were away. So we got to see, they had big TV out there and all the kids were so excited. They actually got to, you know, communicate with the kids back at school. Let's see, I will have to say the positive vibes that I experienced was amazing and contagious. And there was a lot of calls and shout-outs to find your fire. So thank you. I want to commend Mr. White Cotton and all of your staff for what you are doing with our children. our children, and our district must make the commitment to approve your school as soon as possible. Also that day, I'm making my rounds, I stopped to say hello to the district office. Also, I met up with Officer Collins at the Lincoln PD to thank them for all they do for our community and kids every day. Wednesday, the 21st, I met with about 20 to 25 of my friends, who are district employees and community members, asking questions of what they wanted to see from our district. Thursday, the February 2nd, I was actually able to visit Lincoln High School with April, and I met with Ms. Laddan, Ms. States, I think that's her high school, and Ms. Garnola and Ms. Monroe, and the program, we visit the Wellness Center, and the program that they are, they're trying to put together is whether it be at school or home, the kids, you know, have issues, you know, and what the last few years have taught us, we must put mental health first. Oh, let's see, oh, and then I stopped at Officer Collins' office at the high school and asked him what the resources that the district could do to help our kids. And lastly, I have a reserved table for the trap team dinner, like I did last year, so I do support the trap team for sure. Thank you.
You had all three?
Well, no, I had three more, but I left them off. I figured I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't ask anybody else, so I'm sorry.
It was just two weeks, right, since the last meeting? I think it was seven months.
Three weeks, it's an extra week.
Yeah, I got an extra week.
It's a leap year.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay, so I've attended to Twelve Bridges High School varsity games. We'll be attending the last one tomorrow night. I attended the district facilities meeting. I visited the Lincoln High School Health and Wellness Center as well. Christina and Nancy, who worked that, were very gracious with their time, showed me everything, the premise they kind of make. They told me the things that they needed and wanted for the center, so after I left, I went to Walmart, I bought a bunch of food, I stocked their food pantry, and then I put a post on Good Neighbors of, not Good Neighbors, like for my own Facebook, but tomorrow, foodball table will be delivered for them. Somebody graciously donated a weighted blanket. I have one already donated, one's coming tomorrow as well, a bunch of clothes, some shoes, so the community's been really great and helping step up. Some things I actually donated to Phoenix as well, for your proms, some men's sweatshirts, and some teenager clothes for... I cleaned my daughter's closet, she's not here, so. What else? Last night I went, Carrie was there, and George, we went and learned more about the Brown Act. The most important thing I think I'm going to be learning for the next four years is Brown Act and Brown Act and Brown Act. I did want to, while I have a room full of audience, approach something from the last meeting, because I think I may have upset quite a few members of the community with my wanting to table YDN, and I want to make some clarification. I have met with many community leaders now, either on the phone or in person. Everybody loves YDI. I have nothing to say bad about YDI. They're 100% supportive of it, every single person I've talked to. My main reason of tabling that was because of the symbols I saw on the paperwork. I would just like you to know that if it had a MAGA symbol on it, I would have done the same thing. I'm just trying to make sure we pay for and pick programs that represent everybody. I forwarded my questions that I have about it onto Carrie to share with Adrian, and I'm hoping they're all addressed tonight, and I can positively move forward from here. But I'm sorry if I upset anybody. I'm new, learning the role. It was very, I just want to make sure I'm making good decisions, so I hope everybody can be supportive of that.
Thank you.
So, Claire Stolway-Thunder, I went to Twelve Bridges High School, and I just want you for a second to imagine what it would be like to be your senior, right?
Junior.
Junior in high school, and you have to present, because you just look so sophisticated. And you have to put together a fact sheet so that you can explain to a patient who's finding out in that conversation that they have Huntington's disease, which will ultimately cripple and kill them. And she sat down with me, had an adult conversation about the kinds of care I was going to need, the support I was going to need at home. I mean, like, talk about putting a kid in a situation where they have to do a real thing, and it was magnificent to see. It's exactly the kind of skills that I look for when I'm trying to find somebody to work in a company or lead a company, and I'm so impressed with you and your partner, and I'm so impressed with Ms. Ritalik for putting that assignment in front of you. I don't think those are easy assignments to manage. She's got to wrangle people from the public to come in. You were prepared for my questions, which I thought was amazing, so just hats off to you, and hats off to that program. I think it's absolutely fantastic, and that was a real thrill for me to get to see. After that, I spent 30 minutes talking with her class, specific to like, so what's it like to be you? A lot of those answers were very surprising to me. We don't do that enough. We guys, we owe you better than that. We should be doing that more often, and not just us, but parents and other adults and staff members should just sit down with you and go, what sucks and what doesn't, and let's see how we can help. Some things just suck, and that's the way it is, but some things can be made better, so I appreciated the class giving me time. One thing that really stood out to me is how long it took for anybody to talk, and I think it's very easy to breeze through a classroom, ask a few questions, and think you've gotten the answer, but if you stay in the pocket and you keep, yeah, but why, yeah, but why, and sit in the silence, and build that trust, that's when all of the information started coming, and I know that Ms. Ritalik and I were both surprised at some of the things we heard, so I appreciated that. I also visited the Wellness Center, and I'm sitting down with one of the staff members, and I asked them, well, what kinds of things get done here? Like, help me understand the work. Well, a lot of times we're not doing, you know, I don't know, super important things, but we teach kids how to come in and just reset. I was like, what's that look like? Well, we want them in class, that's the priority, but if they need to come in here and reset, we make it, we make it safe for them to do that. And I thought, wow, that is a skill that every adult should learn how to do, because I'll bet you, if we need to raise your hand in this room where you said something stupid because you should have been quiet and reset, that's an incredible life skill, and I'm absolutely glad that that's happening, because I don't remember anybody teaching me that when I was a kid, because I think it left me with the impression that what I'm saying is not that important, that I have to think about it before I say it. So, I thought that was fantastic, and I also love the fact that, yes, it's a wellness center, yes, it's a place to go and sort of take a minute, but they're also teaching young people how to breathe through anxiety and depression and those types of things. Super good. I want to mention the STEAM program and Jackout at Lehman Elementary. What an incredible program that is, an absolutely fantastic program where they're sort of planting the seed of technology and solving problems and science and all those types of things in a way very young kids start to sort of connect, doing things with their hands of learning. I thought that was fantastic. I was glad to know that was happening. I also learned quite a bit about bilingual immersion. I didn't understand it. I have four kids that took multiple years of Spanish and don't speak it, ever. And so I was wondering, like, what's the value of bilingual immersion, and what I learned in that program is when you take a young person and teach them a second language, they outperform their monolabel counterparts by fourth and fifth grade in every single subject. So, teaching is hard. Teaching is hard, and I'm glad people have really understood the science behind doing that, because I wouldn't have connected those two things together, so I appreciate that the district's doing that work. And then one of the things I noticed is there's a video that explains that exact concept, and it was actually made by the Twelve Bridges High School Media Department, and I say this all the time, we should give kids real problems to solve, and that was such a brilliant example of it. I thought it was stunning. We should be doing more of those things. I think everything that this district consumes should hopefully at one point be made by students, because they're more than capable of doing it, and I appreciate the work that the tops are doing at Twelve Bridges High School. It's absolutely fantastic work. Sorry. You better have a big long list, because it's been a whole thing.
I don't have time for a big long list anymore, so I will keep it brief. So, I also visited the Wellness Center. I think they've visited a lot this last two weeks, and I won't recap everything, but it was very impressive. I mean, it was way beyond my expectations, and it is a job well done. So, it is a job well done. Congratulations on that, Carrie, to your team. I will be meeting also with the district to talk about facilities on the night, and then I will be attending the fundraiser crowd feed on the 11th, and so I'll leave. You'll be there, I guess, I don't know. So, anyway. And that is all I have. I'm sorry. You know what? I thought I was going to do good and bypass my...
Don't let it take your confidence. You're doing fine.
No.
You're doing...
I don't have a problem with confidence.
I don't.
Okay, let's see. So, Representative from what's that? Josh.
Hi.
Hi.
It's like six months, but still, this is not any more comfortable. It's easier talking from a kid's just to say. So, Greg asked when I was going to start, Greg, George, sorry, when I was going to bring more to you. I'll have a little bit more to add, hopefully. Still got to take it short. There's a lot of people here that want to talk. So, Teacher of the Year, we have chosen Teacher of the Year, so we have at the high school level, Kelly Ward from Lehman High School. And Greg Turner from... And then I also attended with Audrey and Carrie and some of the bargaining team, the governor's budget meeting with School Services. School Services is a group that kind of talks to the school district side of things, so that was always fun to go here, the how terrible everything's going to be. So, yeah, so it was great to be there, and this is where, to be honest, right, I know somebody threw out CTA there, but like, what's a, really, we're just here to make sure we got great teachers in the classroom, like Teacher of the Year, like Scott Beatty, like, and the truth is, like, it's a hard time to be a teacher right now. Like, Instagram right now, some, right, there's a teacher who left, it's working at Costco, because it pays better to work at Costco than it does to teach, right? Some of that, and I know dyslexia is on the agenda tonight, and some of the best pairs we've had work three jobs. I go see them at Safeway, I go see them, and a lot of them have left, because they, honestly, it doesn't pay enough to come and be a special ed support in the school district. It's hard time, it's just, you know, it's tough to recruit people. So, good news, the shiny silver lining is, you know, the governor is proposing to invest more in schools next year, looking at about a major cent cost of living raise for the school, and we are looking, we're also sending out, our bargaining teams are going to be sending out, sorry, but anyhow, as Gus mentioned, we are surveying our members to see what they care about, where we should be spending our money, where we should be investing, at least as far as the teachers believe, so we're sending that survey out here soon, and then we'll be getting into bargaining and looking to try to get raises and try to recruit teachers with the great raises, benefits, and everything we have going on here, so that's really what we care about. Thank you.
Good job. Special Classified Employee Association, Gus? Nope. Okay, all right, now Superintendent Hall.
Okay, so just will mention that when we do future board items later, conversation about committees, and then there was a question previously about safety in athletics and AEDs, and so I want to give you guys an update on some information related to that. We'll also want to talk just briefly about the facilities informational meetings that you guys are attending right now, and kind of what that process moving forward at future board meeting will look like, as well as possible follow-up with the governance team development workshop that we have on the 21st, which folks have already spoken about. Leadership Lincoln, on January 19th, I was expecting Jason to take something about this, so I have to give a huge, huge shout-out to Jennifer Holadon, Heather Pierce, our two principals at Lincoln High School and Twelve Bridges High School, and then Jennifer Horton, our college and career coordinator, as well as all of the incredible teachers and students who opened up classrooms and shared information about all the great things that are happening around college and career and student activities in our high schools. We had about 25 participants from Leadership Lincoln ride the school bus from Twelve Bridges High School to Lincoln High School and hear lots of amazing things about what we're doing in our district, and I think the feedback was really positive, so it was Education Day on the 19th of January, so lots of community members coming onto our campus and hearing about it, and really proud of the work of our team.
It was awesome. It truly was.
You have your time.
I'm sorry, I'm off.
I was able to attend the access superintendent symposium, I think it was two weeks ago now, and Arianna talked about the years of service pins. I went to Twelve Bridges High School, Lincoln High School, Phoenix High School, Lincoln Crossing Elementary, and Lehman Elementary, and we still have some more to hand out, and I'm glad that Mary McQueen's in the room, because she was not at Lincoln High School when I went to deliver it, and she is the recipient of our largest Years of Service Pin issue of 35. I attended the workshop last night as well, and the most exciting thing that I did in the last couple of weeks was I was the emcee for Taste of Italy for Rotary on Saturday evening, and raised a lot of money for Rotary to give back to the community, and a shout-out to the Twelve Bridges High School Interact Club. They were there. Ursula Bombard, their advisor, was also there supporting the event, and the kids earned $1,000 in tips for their hard work, which will go into the club, and I may have matched that with another $1,000 personally, so they will have $2,000. So, yeah, so they have $2,000 going just to their club, and then Rotary itself, I think, earns probably $20,000 at least that will be putting back into the community, so super exciting about that, so that's my report.
All right, moving on. Member of the public, public wishing to comment on any item should complete a yellow request to address the Board of Trustees form located on the table at the entrance to the boardroom. Request forms are to be submitted to the board clerk before each item is discussed. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. However, in exceptional circumstances, when necessary to ensure full opportunity for public input, the board president may, with board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for the public input and/or time allotted for each speaker. Any such adjustment shall be done equitably, so as to allow a diversity of opinions. Okay, so.
Do I have to do?
We have to do that item first, okay?
Right, so we have to do 5.10 from consent, and then, and then we'll do public comment after presentation.
For comments, will be, will, member Freeman pulled 5.10, and would you like to start?
I thought my tape had leaked, so I'm not on my way. Yeah, that's what happened, you know, it's like a Taylor Swift concert.
The reason I pulled the item, I know we had conversations yesterday, I think it was, is like, you know, we were in these talks, you know, there's only two of us in the room because of the Brown Act, and I want to make sure that we're all very, we want, I want to make sure that the $150,000 that we're spending to move, for us to approve the possible 11 portables to Twelve Bridges High School, is that something that we want to do, and I just want to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of other schools that I feel need help in the way of money, and I don't know how anybody else on the board feels, but I, you know, there are several schools that were slated for money for the bond that didn't get, unfortunately, get bond passed, and now we want to send all of our money to Twelve Bridges High School, and we have no money left for the other schools. And I want to make sure, because we've all had that conversations, yet these separately, how do we, how do we feel about that? Is it just me, or like, now that we can talk, I want to actually have this conversation?
So, let me just say, I have not had those conversations yet, which even makes it more important that this was pulled today, because I have not had the facilities presentation yet, so I don't even know how this is affected by that or vice versa.
Would you like just to explain the item?
Yes.
Yes, please, sir.
So, Mike, why don't you go ahead and, and this is specifically for the growth and the need for the passing of the Act at Twelve Bridges High School for next school year for our students, yeah?
Yeah, so this is strictly for the fact that, for growth. This is a modernization, this isn't anything like that as far as, you know, doing anything that was in the top priority projects put upon. This is strictly for the fact that Twelve Bridges High School right now, as we add that 12th grade, and the support, nine through 12 comprehensive high school, having that extra grade there, we're going to be approaching capacity already. Development is happening really fast right now in the Twelve Bridges area, so it's already in passion for Bridges High School. In addition to that, once we get those kids back, with the development that's happening, our demographic report, the six-year lookout, we're going to be approaching 1,600 kids within that six, within that six year, so this is for growth that's coming now, as well as anticipation of that future growth. We have it in place. What I used to say, you know, with escalation, you're looking at it yearly, you can try to predict that, I mean, we're in monthly now, so construction costs are just going to continue to go up, so we're doing a little bit of forward planning now and adding those extra portables now. Where the general ed classroom, portable classrooms are going to go, where the long-term, where the next permanent two-story building is going to go, so we're doing some site work there that's going, that's going to basically kind of forward some of that anticipation for that next year. Law costs are, you know, here, a little over here.
So, this is for the students that are going to be, and the teachers that are going to be moving over to that school on that fourth grade, so we have about 280 students projected to increase next year, Twelve Bridges High School, and we have approximately 10 teachers that are going to be also moving on to that site, and so we do not have the capacity now, and so we need to move those eight classrooms and two larger portables or PE lockers, or changing, I think they're athletic rooms, and then a restroom out in the stadium area. So, they're definitely based on need. It's not any kind of modernization. This expense was not in the bond. The second building was going to be included in the bond, but for this, this is based on growth, so the kids are going to show up, the teachers are going to be there, we need to have the room for them. So, the funds are... are going to be there, we need to have the room for them. So the funds are, need to be expended. We need, we were actually behind on this, so we do need to get started on this.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that, that... I know. Everyone out, let's go home. Correct me if I'm wrong, that regardless of, as we're having these conversations with two at a time, that the dollars that we're trying to earmark or identify for the board to take action on, regardless of what they decide on that, the use of developer fees, at the very, at the very least, if we have to utilize some of the developer fees that are still coming in from that Twelve Bridges area, which need to be used in the Twelve Bridges area, that that would be utilized for the purposes of just addressing the growth and the need regardless. So the grand capacity, or the grand scope of possibilities for Twelve Bridges High School, that is still something that you guys will have to take action on about trying to address some of the things that were not addressed to equalize schools, right? And so when we did the facilities master plan development, there were the three kind of areas that we looked at. So the committee looked at, we need to make sure we have enough room space for our kids, right? Like when we are addressing the growth in our different areas, we have to make sure that we're addressing the need to ensure adequate classroom space. Then there's the issue related to making sure that there's some equity amongst the schools in terms of facilities. And it might not be shiny and new, but do all of our schools have similar access to facilities? So Creekside Oaks came up in some of that conversation because they didn't have a multipurpose room like our other elementary schools. Twelve Bridges High School's PE and athletic fields as compared to Lincoln High School, that came up as part of that conversation. And then the third would be that modernization and updating of our existing facilities so that we can be proud of all of the facilities that kids learn in. And those weren't necessarily in an order of priority. If I had to say one that needs to be a priority is that we have enough space to house the kids that are coming from the different areas. And there are different ways that we can look at addressing that. And I think the board's going to have to make some tough decisions in years to come about how do we address the growth in the Twelve Bridges area as we, you know, address funding and all of those types of things. So regardless of what you ultimately decide to do with some of those dollars that we've been discussing thus far, and we'll talk about more openly at some point, we would be needing to use developer fees just to do the portable relocation. And it's going to be all said and done without $4 million to do the portable relocation?
No, maybe, you know, give me four, I'm going to spend two and a half.
Right, that's true. So we're going to be as reasonable as possible, but...
Yeah, we're going to sweep everything we can.
So, okay, so if, I think I'm not understanding this. So the benefit's costing to move the portables, that's not the figure that we are talking about in our meetings?
It could be a component of that, but if the board chooses to make a decision to, based off of that savings from the bond, the bond projects, right? If the board chooses to use that in a different way, we would then have to look towards developer fees that are being generated from that Twelve Bridges area. And these are not developer fees that are going to be for Village Five or Village Seven where they haven't come in yet to build those schools that don't exist yet. It's in the area of Twelve Bridges where that infill is still happening. We would then have to look to use developer fees to do that instead. So, right, yeah. So this could be, this could either be a part of that conversation, or, which would then allow us to use developer fees in a different way, still addressing where the developer fees are coming from. Or it's using the developer fees and then the dollars are still there to the $200,000 less perhaps, to then have conversations about how that gets spent.
Well, I was just going to speak to the process of the facility master plan committee, if that's of value. No, this is a different thing.
I mean, no, go ahead.
Yeah, so the facility master plan was revised the last year, I think it was last year, right?
Six-hour meetings.
There were several.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, there were. Did you go through those? I can't recall.
No, we went through the six-hour where you, we...
Yeah, so there were, I think, three meetings that preceded that. And so first, I can absolutely understand, we're like, well, hold on a second, like, are we going to talk about this? Are we just going to write a big fat check and do the large portables? I totally get that. I see this differently because I was in that process. I see this as Mike's team executing on what, how many people were in that, 60, 50?
Forty-two, and then just Amber.
And there were representatives of all layers of the organization, and members of the public, and members from the bond oversight committee, from the previous bond. So this was a very in-depth, very slow and methodical process in which a collective opinion from, and it was a lot of principals and vice principals sort of there, saying, here's what we really need, here's what we never had. And it does a real disservice for you to not see that process, because you would have seen it and thought, okay, we're doing the best we can with what we have. Because there wasn't an unrepresented person there that I'm aware of. We had students present, we had members of public present, yeah, we had teachers, parents, folks that represented athletics. So it was a real wide swath of individuals that could contribute to the process. So as I see this, these are all things that, like, we literally took fake money and stuck, and I think you guys were there for that part, yeah. So we kind of did, but you saw the buckets based on a probably four multiple-hour day session. So, I mean...
Right. And I understand that, but when we were at the meeting, we filled those buckets, and there was four or five of these schools that needed assistance. And I feel that we're giving all the money to one school, but then there's four other ones. Literally, there's two that need help right now, three. There's Sheridan, there's Coffin, and then there's Beeks.
Right.
I'm not okay with not giving anybody...
Oh, of course not, of course not. But I don't know what this particular dollar amount would do. And those schools are not overcapacity either. So that's kind of the bigger issue. It's like, if we don't have room for students, that's a different conversation than, we need to modernize or we need to...
Then there's other conversations that need to happen around what we can do to move those kids somewhere.
Yeah.
Other places. So there's other...
You're saying not have them attend Twelve Bridges High School?
I'm saying that, not necessarily. I'm saying that, you know, we could possibly move pathways, we could do lots of other things besides, you know, there's a lot of other things that we haven't explored yet. At least I haven't. Maybe you haven't at other three meetings, but I haven't, April hasn't, and I mean, so I'm trying to understand where this is, where the kids come from. I just don't want to leave out our other schools. I'm not okay with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's all right.
Because we're all, we have to go to those schools that are just as apart.
Of course.
As a nice, shiny school.
I mean, this just strictly has to do with the fact that Twelve Bridges High School boundary is growing. And we're approaching capacity and beyond. So this is just strictly that, the fact that...
Is this just to drop, up the plans, move the portables, or is this actually just dropping the board?
This is...
This is just the architect and engineer.
It is, but...
And this isn't coming from the money collected from that district or that area, right? This is from our, what, general fund?
No, these are from facilities funds.
Okay.
But this is the preliminary work to be able to, at the project, to move the portables over to Twelve Bridges High School, to accommodate the 280 students that will be projected that will showing up next year and attend teachers. So it is different than the modernization that we need to do at the other schools. And no one is saying that it's needed. It's just the priority right now is that we need to be able to house the students. And so, and then we have other funds that we can look at modernizing other sites. But right now, this is the need. And to do that, we need to start the planning to be able to move those over the summer to have them ready to go in August for the students.
Okay, I have a couple, is there ever five then?
Okay. So I'm currently a junior at Twelve Bridges. And the only thing is, it's definitely a nice, shiny school, but it is a small school. Our classrooms are small, the founders are small, and it cannot hold another class. We have three classes right now. If we tried to add another incoming freshman class, it would not hold it. There would be nowhere to put them. Right now, teachers are teaching on their prep period. There's no, like, organization, and it's chaos. There's been talks about having teachers with rolling carts to switch classrooms with other teachers on their prep period, and then they have nowhere else to go. We're trying to take away classrooms from teachers and just kind of cycle through them. And there's no way to fix this. We could move pathways, but the only way to accommodate another class would be put portables. Right now, there's not enough space.
I have something to add with that. I've spoken to one teacher in particular at Twelve Bridges High School who has, I think, two classes with 38, two English classes with 38 kids in it, two other classes, I think, with 37, 36. I think their average is about 37 students per class. On their even days, they have no prep period. It's also their first year teaching at the school. And so that's only one teacher I've spoken to specifically, but they are completely overwhelmed, this teacher.
Thank you.
I have a question of you. If we don't do as you suggest, how does that...
If we don't put portables over there, I would imagine that we'll have to, I'm not sure, because there are very few classes that are even available. And teachers would have to be moving around during, they would not have their own classrooms. So, and that, and we've had, at meetings with the committee at the school site, talking about that. And this is, we don't do this at any of our other schools. So I can't, I don't even want to imagine what it would be like if we had to do that, because I don't know how you would get 280 kids in that existing classroom.
I hear you saying you don't have the viable term to make that.
Well, they would, they, I mean, I'm just thinking of options. We would have to, I guess...
Yeah, I mean, every classroom, every period would be absorbed. And we'd have to find workplace for teachers during their prep time. As it stands, even with the eight portable classrooms that are, that this, and to go back to Marjorie's question before, this is just for the architects to plan for it. The board could still decide that you're not going to choose to move them now. It's not for not in terms of the work, because at some point, we're going to have to address this issue sooner than later, is kind of how we feel. If we're going to make this happen for the start of the school year in the fall, the architects really need to get working on the plans currently. You could still choose later not to spend the $4 million that it's going to take to actually do all of the work and move them. This is just the plan piece. But it's probably only going to delay the fact that there's going to be some shared classroom space in years to come. Because as Mike said, that we'll be at about, what, 13, 1400 about next year?
It's right around 1300.
Right around 1300. And then, but we're projected to be closer to 1600 in the next five, six years. So we're still going to have some space issues in a couple of years.
I have a couple of questions, or do you want to ask about?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, if I may. It looks like, and I'll start with the easy one. The, this document, it looks like the documents were started on 1/23 prior to approval of this by the board. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, I mean, some of the preliminary work we need to do, because, I mean, these portables are going to be coming from the farm, Lincoln High School. So they, you know, they need to start looking at the buildings themselves. We're going to have to, you know, detach at Lincoln High School, kind of get the parking lot back, get it back to a parking lot. What we're going to have to do to bring in infrastructure out of the site, looking at that still. Pre-planning right now, I mean, we're already trying to get appointments with the DSA architects. Time is of the essence right now. DSA is already getting logged. So you can't do any project until DSA approves it. So we're doing some of the preliminary work now.
So there was some work done before, and before we brought this to the board to ratify it. So we have, we contracted with them, and we have a position to do that as far as work with them, preliminary work. But a lot of the big work is going to be done as soon as we can get, you know, start doing all the major work, doing the plans and everything. But Mike's been having conversations because we've been talking about, what are we going to do, how are we going to move them? So he has to talk to the architects. So there's some of ours, not a lot, but we had to start it to be able to come up with a proposal to bring this through.
My next question is, if, I mean, there's obviously a difference between the classes that are offered at each high school. And I know it may be a topic for another meeting, but Christie asked about pathways, you know, moving some things to Lincoln. It feels a little bit like you go here for this, you go there for that. If in the future, there was some intermingling, maybe starting, you know, some classes that are interested in Lincoln students that are happening at Twelve Bridges and vice versa. If that happened, would there still be enough room at Lincoln High School to house those classes if these buildings are moved?
Yeah, the biggest issue that we have found in the two years thus far that we've been doing this is that most of our students are choosing to go to their home school regardless of what's offered at the other school. And so they may be looking to do a co-enrollment, still staying at their home school, but maybe take a course or two at the other school. So I'm not sure that pathway shifts is going to make a significant difference because students are going to...
But they're, so, okay, so...
Yeah, but there is, we're at Lincoln High School. And there may be, you know, to just, because of the reality is out of full transparency, the board may have to be having some boundary conversations in the future about which schools feed to Twelve Bridges High School and which schools feed to Lincoln High School. And so, you know, that is a huge disruption to our community. And, you know, there are folks that have moved in with the understanding that their kids' feeder pattern is this, right? And so it's not where we want to start the conversations in terms of things that we could do to ensure that we are maximizing the use of some of our facilities. We have, essentially, there's going to be empty portables at Lincoln High School as they continue to adjust down as Twelve Bridges has opened and coming to capacity. And so we're trying to maximize the facilities that we have by taking existing portables and moving them to a location where they're going to be utilized to just maximize to the extent that we can before we have to get to a point where the board has to make some tough decisions potentially in the future about boundaries and...
And we don't want, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, at some point, yeah.
That doesn't sound fun. Okay. My next question, and I just have a short question. What is the price comparison to just building new portables as opposed to moving the...
You mean...
By purchasing new portable?
Yes.
They're about...
Each portable to...
They're about $200,000 per, so...
To build?
Yeah.
Wait, I thought you said it's $4 million to move?
To...
To purchase.
It's portable we already have where we locate.
We currently own the portables. If we were to buy portables and have to retrofit the classroom and all the technology that's currently in them right now, it would probably, I've always estimated, you know, what is the cost is like three...
They're about $250,000 to $300,000.
And that's, and then you have to do all the electrical and the grading and setting them. And so I usually say around $350,000 to $400,000, because it's never cheap to do that.
But if I'm doing my math, right, we're paying $500,000 for move?
No, we don't have to pay that because we already own the portables. But we are doing...
We have to do the site work.
We have to do the site work too, because right now it's dirt. And so we have to do the site work to be able to draw them on the site.
So the $4 million-ish is for site work?
Yeah.
And the site work would be on top of that money you're trying to save?
Yeah.
Right.
So site work's about $150,000 for portable, to purchase the portable is about...
Maybe another $2 to $3 million?
So, yeah, you're spending $500,000.
And then we're also doing site work for the two athletic rooms that are going to be there, and then the restroom. So, you know, there's a lot of work that we're going to be doing. We're also doing preliminary work when, in anticipation of when we do place the permanent two-story building classrooms that are already done. We don't have to do it again when we have enough money to do the permanent buildings for the portable dream. So $4 million is actually not too bad considering everything we're going to be doing. When you talk about the two-story permanent building...
They're about $12 million.
It's about $12 million. So two-story would be about $24 million to do the same thing.
Fair enough. Thank you. Here's my final question. This is a big one. Can we pay for this with the developer fees instead of with our general fund? That could be used somewhere else.
There's, we're not paying with, anything with general fund right now.
Okay.
This is, we will have to look and see, we do have developer fee funds. We have some other funds that are relatively undesigned towards school site. We have bond money... money is designated, any bond savings must be spent on those bond schools.
But the developer fees have to be used for that area, for those developer, for those developer fees?
Developer fees can be used on any school site where you have growth.
Okay, so it's not specific to that area? Those developer fees over in that area don't have to be spent in that area?
They do not, but we cannot spend, we don't spend developer fees on modernization. That is state funding, and so, if you wanted to modernize a school, an existing school, and there's no growth in that, you have to be really careful with how you spend developer fees, because it, it requires that they be spent on growth expenditures. So, if you have more kids, more capacity, that's where you spend developer fees.
And this is considered for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I forgot my last question. For you, but that's, and I have, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions that, that spur anymore questions?
Yeah.
You answered some of mine.
Okay, good, good question.
So, I've, I've been leading the working group at TBHS with a group of concerned staff and admin. They brought this subject up in the early fall when they saw how much growth happened in the summer, and realizing we were going to be at capacity real fast. So, we've been engaging staff at this level, trying to problem solve. Obviously, this would take stuff we already have, de-located where we need it. So, it's been a lot of kind of work that's been going against the background. We obviously want to avoid having teachers have to travel on carts. That's not best practice. And these kids, we're going from nine through eleven to nine through twelve, so unless we were going to decide to tell current kids at that school, there's no room for you, you have to go to the other high school. I mean, that's, that's kind of where some of this would get, if we start talking about that. So, you see that, that could be problematic. So, just, just other things to consider when we're talking. We've been trying to avoid the whole cart thing. That's why we looked at additional spaces. That, that's something that happens in, in dire circumstances, but if, if it's something we could avoid, we try to avoid it. So, that's kind of been our, our priority as we've been working. So, how many classrooms do they have currently that are unused? Let's use those first. How many more classrooms do we need? That's where we came up with the, the eight. So, this, this would help us not have to have people on carts next year, we wouldn't have to share rooms. Obviously, as they grow, that'd be the next step, was filling to capacity. You might end up with some folks, like specialized teachers who teach at four class, several of them sharing one room throughout the day. So, there's, there's other things we can do long-term as we continue to grow, but just a little more.
And it'll also eliminate, should need for teachers, the majority of the teachers who are working through their prep period, and this would also lessen that, which is a key factor right now. They're trying to address that, so we need to have that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a speaker on this item, Josh Ripcider?
Oh.
All right. So, being a teacher at Twelve Bridges High School, who currently does travel around on those carts, because I have to, but because of specialized facilities that I use, and a teacher that teaches on my prep, I can tell you, like, we are, I mean, you said it already, like, we're out of space, and almost everybody's giving up to prep already. Like, I, I can't imagine if we did have teachers when we're on the carts that we would have room. We currently don't have a locker room, so we are bad, bad.
You do.
Bad classroom that's being used as a locker room, apparently. I, I haven't seen that.
Excess.
Yeah. So, that's part of, like, trying to fix that, like, open up a classroom space by dropping a portable that can be used as a locker room. Kids currently are storing baseball bags, like, in the office. Like, if you walk through the office, you're, like, stepping over sports bags, because we just, we're out of space. It's, I just want to say, like, it's not, I know we're a nice fancy school, but it's like, we, we're still one, we're going to have one more class, we're going to bring over, you know, a bunch more kids. I have no idea where you're going to put it if we don't bring some portables over. And I know part of this is also addressed in the bathroom. Like, currently, we have a football field, and we have porta potties that go to the bathroom and stuff. And not that we're bringing over anything much, you know, we're bringing over at least a permanent portable bathrooms, so we flush those, it's going to be a little bit nicer, right? So, so, yeah, I, it's not like we're trying to, like, take all the money over, over the size of the town, it's just, it really is, teachers, all I can say is, teachers right now are really unhappy about how many of us are teaching on the prep and how slammed our classrooms are. It's a very difficult situation, and I, if we don't do something about it, it's going to be a lot worse next year, so.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Is it possible for us to use the most restrictive funding on that?
It would, it would be facilities dollars, so.
We would, we could use developer fees for this, and we would look at any sources available to be able to, that.
Just the most restrictive?
Yeah.
Okay. And then?
Yeah, this is not, this definitely is not general fund dollars at all.
It's absolutely not general fund. It's facilities funds, and it's, it's funds that are perfectly used for, for growth.
And then, once, once they go up the bid and the bids come in, are we going to see this item again?
Yes, we will see, you will see a contract. Sorry. So, Mike, maybe you should.
So, the intention is to do a lease leaseback. It's going to be the most economical, the most efficient way, the best way to make the price as good as we can get it, rather than a traditional design bid build, where the architect designs it, the contractor bids it, they build it, kind of leaves yourself open for, for more change order. With the lease leaseback, they get the plans early, they actually, they actually work with the architect on the plans themselves, make it as efficient as possible, and they give you what they call a guaranteed maximum price. So, that's the price. And, and we'll negotiate contingencies, because, you know, there's always prices, but that's something that we can negotiate, rather than, here's a change order for a hundred thousand.
So, we'll see. Yes, we should be seeing.
So, the intent, again, we're, we're trying to get this thing through DSA to bring it back, and that's when we have it on the, the schedule there, to the first meeting of May, to approve the guaranteed maximum price of the contract.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Are we, so we ready for a vote then? Okay, is it?
Yeah, we'll have to roll call for the adoption consent.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Oh.
I'll move to, for the item.
Sir, second?
A second.
All right.
Could you read the item, at least a short version of the item?
It's, it's right here. It's the book that we, I, my, my. Do you want me to read it, George?
No.
Okay. All right, sorry.
Um, Ms. Williams? The one?
Yes.
You know him so well, by his first name.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. Dykstra?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Ms. Litzel?
Yes. Thank you to everybody who gave us that time to talk about it. We think that that was important for us, especially in the talks that we're in right now, to get that clear. So, thanks for bringing that up. All right. Oh, I get to go to?
So, the, those will come after all the presentations, yes?
Okay, all right. So, we'll move to seven point two, contact with YDN Network, Youth Development and New Master Plan in front of the committee committee.
Okay, so this was on consent at our last meeting, and it was tabled for more information. And so, Adrian Ruiz from our Youth Development Network has graciously agreed to come and present to the board to give some more information regarding this master plan.
Good evening, trustees, citizens of Lincoln. Does anyone need a stretch break? Because I'm a lot. YDN, the organization that I have the honor and the privilege to steward as the executive director, has been in partnership with your school district for nine years now, about a decade's worth of work. Nothing's changed. I, I was able to capture some of the comments of the last board meeting, and I, I feel strongly that I do want to clear the air and conquer those assumptions that we've put out there. One, we've been in partnership too long. We've done too much great work together. Just off now, we're at a point in time where we can actually put this on overdrive, if you will, and do this throughout the city of Lincoln. With that said, I think there's also something, some misconceptions about what youth development is and what it isn't. So, I, I want to slow it down a little bit. I, I don't know if I'm on that three-minute thing or not, but, okay. Y'all are going to have to bring it back in March.
Yes.
There, there's a couple of things I want to share with you about what youth development is and what it isn't for all of you all. The first thing is, when you think of youth development, it's a process that everyone in this room has experienced or is experiencing right now in their life. What I mean by that, is the process of growing out and being taken care of by others, to transitioning into adulthood and being taken care of by, or, or now you're taking care of others, right? Raise up your hand if you've been down that road. Raise up your hand if you've been there. Yeah, like, that's youth development, right? And, and I want to be very clear about what this thing is. The second, it's the approach that we take, right? So, if it's a process, what's the approach that we take in working with our young people and bringing them alongside? And that's where the third piece comes in of what youth development is. It's a field of research. We're, we're sitting on sixty years of research that tells us what young people is. Guess what? Everyone in this room already knows. Yeah, I mean, we just do, right? Like, if you're, if you're a parent, you know. If, if you're a faith-based organization counselor, you know. If you're a teacher, you know. What this does is, is put a common language together so that we can all get on the same rail and do some great work together. So, I want to talk about what youth development is in terms of the process quickly, and we're going to go design thinking here. We've got three dimensions, and Jen was going to help me, and she's. Thank you. Okay, so, you've, you've heard mention of the five supports and opportunities, right? You've heard this over and over again. So, let's just go there. What is this? And by this, when I say what it is, you should also just know by proxy what it's not, right? So, when you think of safety, I want you to think of three things: physical safety, emotional safety, and cultural safety. That's what you mean, what we, the research means by safety. Raise up your hand if being safe is important to you in this room. Come on, right? Like, this is what we know. So, this stuff is just a human, human development one-on-one put into a youth development package. The second thing that I want you to just consider when you think about the five supports and opportunities, is the power of relationship building, right? The power of young people having positive relationships with their peers, but also the power of young people having positive relationships with the adults in their lives. All of the adults. Parents, guardians, teachers, coaches, on and on it goes, right? It's critical that we understand that young people need positive relationships to do great work. We all do. Raise up your hand if having positive relationships in your life is important to you. That's just what it is, right? We call these two the supports, safety and relationships, and then we get to the opportunities for our young people. All the opportunities we want the young people of Lincoln to experience. The first one, as the research puts it, is youth participation or youth engagement, right? That's what we're talking about there. What that means is that we no longer see young people as objects or recipients of services, but we see them as resources right here, right now. We don't ask them their opinion. We work in concert with them to solve the riddles and the knots that we're currently experiencing in our communities. I was at a, and I have to be very careful. We do work all over the region and all over the state, so I have to practice high confidentiality here. I was at a school that shall be named Nameless within an hour radius of where we're at right now. And I was in the room, getting ready to go, and the teacher was going to hand out something called the California Healthy Kid Survey. Y'all familiar with the California Healthy Kid Survey, right? Young woman, I mean, it was like the reincarnation of Norma Rae. She was like, I'm not doing that. And the teacher was like, uh, why? She's like, I'm just not taking another, another evaluation. I'm done with them. You all evaluate us all the time. You survey us all the time. And guess what? When we fill it out, we never find out what you all did with it and what came out of it, so I'm not doing it. That one young brave woman became three, and quickly, the class of twenty-seven students did not take the California Healthy Kid Survey that day. You know what? Good for her. She's right. She's right. Too often, we spend so much time talking to our young people instead of listening with them. Too much time. We try to tell them we have the right answers, when we spend more time having the right questions and listening to what they have to say. Super critical that we think about that as an opportunity, as modeled here on the table today. The fourth one is this: community involvement. That young people feel that they belong to the community. I guess a great way of saying this is, in my neighborhood, when I first moved there, there was a, a group of young people walking this way, and there was a group of adults coming this way. And as they got closer and closer, the group of adults crossed the street to the other side, and went around the young people. And I was like, hmm, isn't that something? Do young people feel a part of the community? Do they feel respected and valued for who they are? The last one is skill building, and Jen, you're going to be able to reach up there. Can I hold on to this one really fast? This one, skill building, is top of the food chain. It's what the people behind me, why I fell in love with them nine years ago. Lincoln, Western Class Unified School District has amongst the greatest administrators, the greatest teachers, the greatest counselors, the greatest staff that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. You all should applaud them right now, because they are that great at what they do. They really are. The great at this, they're great at this. So, we're going to have skill building, right? Skill building is young people getting the skills that they need to thrive and to succeed at their next phase of life. This is the, I'm going to use a chess analogy here. This is the, this is the king on the chessboard. This is the king. This is it, right here, skill building. I don't know where it happened or when it happened, but someone in their right mind in the state of California said, "We don't need to worry about those things with our young people. All we need to do is worry about this." And they tried it, and it did this. That belongs at the top. But using the chess analogy, skill building needs the queen in order to win. These things work in concert. They're interconnected. We can't just say, young people, we want you to succeed academically, without showing them that we're going to provide safe places for them, that we're going to be there and listen to them and bring them in, right? Sorry, skill building, we're going to put you up there soon. That's youth development right there. For nine years, in this school district, the play has just been going over and over. Training, staff, staff then becoming trainers themselves, and I don't know, Superintendent Callahan, how many people have we trained at this point? It's, it's to the point where, like, YDN doesn't even come in to do the training anymore. The district's just doing it, which is awesome. That's the way it should be, but hundreds? Is it safe to say? So, what we presented to you and to the city of Lincoln is, how can we do this on a larger scale? How can we do that, this, so that every system and services in, in which a young person walks into has these things? You have to understand that, yes, educators in this room, you are incredibly important, but our young people are developing seven days a week. They're developing with their faith-based organizations. They're developing at home. They're developing with their coaches. They're developing when they're out there riding their bikes by themselves. I hope they still do that, my goodness. You know, so youth development is a twenty-four-seven ballgame. You understand what I'm saying? It's not something that we just do in first period and say, oh, we did that, we don't need to do it the rest of the day. It is the language and the approach that we take. Let me transition quickly then to what we propose. We've been doing this work now and bringing critical systems and services together to really buy into this language, the approach, the research. And phase one, there's three phases to what we propose. Phase one is just getting all the critical systems and services in the same room, key leadership and their teams, talking about these five supports and opportunities, how they can provide them more, talking about how do we create meetings alongside with young people, meetings that engage them and don't bore them, meetings that invite them to be resources at the table. And then we start talking about what this looks like through training. How many of you have participated in the YDI Youth Development Institute in the district? So, it's that, but at a systems level. It's that, instead of just educators being in the room, it's parks and rec, it's law enforcement, it's faith-based organizations, it's parents and guardians, as many people as we can get in there. Once we've got that in phase one, at the end of phase one, there will be a survey that goes out that asks young people, young people, in the city of Lincoln, how are you experiencing these five supports and opportunities? You're going to have a party when you find out what they say, because my hunch is, there's going to be so much that's right about Lincoln. There's going to be so much to celebrate. There's going to be so much to celebrate. And in there, there's going to be so much that you can, there's going to be some parts that you really want to optimize. There are going to be some parts where you'd be like, I'll just tell you right now, the state of California, according to California Healthy Kids Survey, anyone want to guess where we score the lowest in these five supports and opportunities statewide? Close call. Actually, safety's pretty awesome. Yep. Anyone else want to guess? Close call. Actually, we're doing pretty good at relationship building. Yeah. We still see young people as objects or recipients. Listen to me on the adult versus young people. You have inherited a world from us that we know very little about. I do not have a TikTok account, right? You know what I'm saying? So one of those things that I want you to know is that we're notoriously low throughout the state of California. Most school districts report low numbers with youth engagement. You want to know why? It's what that young lady said at the school district that should be known to us. We survey them all the time. We don't do the follow-up work. We don't do the follow-up work to say, "Hey, here's what you said." In this round, we transition to Phase Two, and we do listening circles. We'll do listening circles with parents and guardians of the community. We'll do listening circles with middle school youths, with high school youth, just to find out, based on what the survey said, what are you thinking? Like, what are some of the things that you have around that? But they're always going to be around these five supports and opportunities. The third phase is meeting with leadership from across the different sectors, along with young people, parents and guardians, to say, "Okay, in the next 10 years, what plan do you want to create as it relates to creating more supports and opportunities for the young people of Lincoln?" In no way, shape, or form do we bring in an agenda. In no way, shape, or form do we tell you what to do. In no way, shape, or form do we even know what's going to happen eight months from now when we get to Phase Three. What we do well, better than most organizations out there, is we hold space for the critical conversations. We hold space for parents and guardians to look at coaches, to look at faith-based counselors and say, "Here's what we need more for our young people." But we also make it so that young people feel safe to speak their voice and their choice, even when their voice shakes, even when they don't have the most eloquent words, which they do most of the time. We will be there to hear that because this thing is critical. They will be 21, 22, 23, 24 in the blink of an eye. I'm experiencing this at home right now. My Adrian graduates from college this May, and it felt like it was quick. I still see him as the eight-year-old playing baseball, right? So I wanted to clear this up. Like, those are the three phases. Carrie said, "Hey, how much does it cost?" I said, "This is what it costs right now." Those costs have actually gone up, by the way. I want to let you know YDI is high demand. Y'all are getting the nine-year family and friends price. That's where it's at right now. We're going to honor what we said there. But I said, "Carrie, don't pay for it out of school district funds." This has to be a shared responsibility between the systems and services that are going to be part of this. So the city of Lincoln was like, "We're in. We're in. We want to be a part of this." My understanding up to this point. It has to be a true collaboration or this just won't work. It just won't work. So I wanted to clear the air because I wanted to say like, "This is what we're doing. Like, this is it, right here." If you've gone through a Youth Development Institute in Phase One, they will experience a modified version of the Youth Development Institute. We will be hearing from young people, reporting back to the leadership team. That's the last part I wanted to, sorry. We're creating a leadership cabinet for this that will be comprised of, school district leaders will be comprised of law enforcement, faith-based organizations, family, guardians, library, whoever else wants to get involved. We're going to create a cabinet, so at every phase, we are reporting to the cabinet what is taking place, what is transpiring. This is not one of those things that at the end of the year, we tell you, "Here's the report." It's not that. It is one of these moments where the dialogue you have together as a community will deliver your destiny as it relates to the development of your young people in Lincoln. I'll stop there and take any questions or comments, but thank you for those three minutes.
Okay. We'll turn it over to the board for questions. Any questions?
Not really. I've had tons of teachers and staff and administrators to answer most of my questions. My biggest concern was that-
We're just doing questions here, and then we'll have discussion. So-
Oh, you can ask a question?
Yes, you may.
What does the social justice mean to you? That's really important for me.
Yeah, absolutely. It's important to us, too. It's one of our core values, meaning those are our principles, our philosophies. It's what wakes us up in the morning. When we define social justice, we talk about, the definition that we have is to promote inclusion. Our work honors diversity, equal voice, and equal choice for all. Making sure that everyone's at the table, making sure that we are not leaving people on the outside when they should be at the table, sharing their thoughts and opinions with us. You do see the icons, which I know is what called attention. We worked closely with a group of young people from an art school locally, and we said, "Here's our core values. Could you give us some icons that we can..." And this is what they came up with. We love them. Obviously, some people look at, "Well, what?" But those are it. Those are our four core values. We only have four of them: relationships, fun, social justice, and change. As it relates to change, we're all being changed right now as we speak. The last three years have fundamentally changed who we are. I think there's two active participants when it comes to change: those who are changed and those who create the change. Let's be those people that do the right thing. So those are our four core values.
I have a question. If this works well, what does that look like?
It's a great question, and it's one that just truly has to happen through the dialogue with the community of Lincoln. But if I share this with you, my thoughts about a magic wand, young people would report that, no matter where they go, as it relates to systems and services that interact with young people, they experience those five things at a high level. Parents and guardians will report to us that they feel that they're working in collaboration and in concert with these services and systems versus seeing, be seen as an outsider or a sleeping giant. I think that that will be critical success. The other thing, about 12 years ago, up in the Divide, Georgetown, Black Oak Mine Unified School District, we ran a similar play with them. They received America's Promise Top 100 Places to Raise Young People. I'll tell you why that's significant. It means they were killing it when it came to this. And I could probably think of a better word, but you know where I'm going with this, right? It was so interesting because they were one out of only 11 rural communities in the entire nation that got that award, right? It happened again in Sacramento a couple of years back. So when you think about that, I would want Lincoln to be known as one of America's top 100 places to raise young people. It may be already. Let's just get this thing on the same rail, right?
This may be the same question, but when you look back on the program, the year-long program, I imagine, what are your markers for success?
Yeah.
You may have to say the same thing you just said.
Yeah, close, close. No, trustee Dyxer-
Are there numbers? Is there any kind of analysis of that?
Trustee Dyxer, two things there. Do not call this a program. So everyone in this room, do not call this a program. We are entering into a year-long dialogue about what our young people need in the next 10 years to thrive and succeed. This will be a conversation. It will not be canned. There will be moments of this that will be crunchy. There will be moments of this where we don't agree, but we're going to do this right. We're going to move this forward. It means that we have to respect everyone's voice and choice throughout this process. I don't know what's at the end of this. What your aspirations are as a community will be, because of the system leaders that interact with us, the dialogue that we have. I will tell you this, though. It is, in some ways, the same answer, trustee Dyxer. There are things that you do incredibly well as the city of Lincoln, and then if you ask young people, even the ones in this room today, there are parts here that we can do so much more when it comes to this. Yeah, yeah. I would add this. I've had, my job takes me to a lot of places. I get to speak to a lot of young people, a lot of teachers. We're not okay. Young people are not okay right now. The well-being of our young people is not in a good place. The data's coming out daily, and you probably have seen it before I have. Young people are reporting feelings of hopelessness like we've never seen before. If you look at the Plaster County suicide rates and suicide attempts, we've never seen those numbers before. Skill building is the king, but without the queen, we're not going to get to where we need to get to. So the well-being of our students will be more strong, of our young people will be more strong because we focus on these five supports and opportunities. Yeah, I hope that helps. Well, I want to say this to you, I have to be crystal clear, and I don't mean to offend anyone. This is not a canned curriculum. This is not, this is a process where we're bringing systems and services together for the first time ever in the city of Lincoln to have a conversation and construct what the next 10 years will look like as it relates to how we raise our young people in this community. It means you can't do this without the other services and systems. Your school district cannot do this by itself. It needs the other services and systems.
I have one more question. I don't remember if you answered. How do parents get picked to participate?
Yeah, that'll be, the committee that fits together, you all pick that, yeah.
Okay, so do we already have a committee?
No, that's all, not till, not till this is signed up on our-
Yeah. There are key, key community members that have been reached out to already. So members of Quanis, members of our faith-based community, Lighthouse. We have police and Parks and Rec, library, city. We have youth, and we're working to get a couple of parents. And then from there, then we have the parents and students that this team will then identify for who's going to receive the listening circle.
So the community doesn't get to pick? So just because you want to be on it doesn't mean you get on it, right?
Not on the, like, so every parent, so, because it'll be our, it'll be Western Plaster, and then it will also be parents and students that participate in Parks and Rec programs, it's going to be parents and students who participate in faith-based organizations, the Foundry, so it's not just the Western Plaster community. Obviously, those students and parents overlap, and so this will take place in all of our different entities, but-
Talking about the committee. Who's picking the committee? The parents for the committee?
So we've met with, with city folks, and we identified, like, when we're thinking about the systems and services that support youth in our community, where are those, right? So Quanis being the service organization whose mission is all about youth services, mental health, health services, Parks and Rec, library-
I'm talking about the parents that'll be on the committee board, though. Who's picking the parents on the committee board?
I think the parents should pick the parents, to be honest with you. I think we should put it out there.
Yeah, we haven't-
I understand the committee, but I-
Yeah, we haven't selected the parents. Yeah, and there's, the executive leadership committee is less than 20, so it's, it's going to be one or two parents that would be-
Will allow the parents of the district or the parents that will sit on the board?
I think, you know, what's happened in other districts is we put the word out, and parents that are interested in being a part of, parents and guardians, excuse me, that would like to be a part of this, they put their name in the hat, right? And make this happen. It's just, it's, can't do this without them. You just can't. You need them at the table. The advantage point that they bring to this is so big, yeah.
I have questions, but I'll wait for them. Anyone else have questions? All right, ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
So I have a series of questions, so if we could just be as succinct as we can, so we've got a lot of stuff tonight, and I will try to be assisting in my head.
Sure.
So your executive leadership section, Western Plaster, you need to like, school district core members, create invitation list to an open kickoff to a leadership committee, and we create and establish the Western Plaster Youth Development Plan. My question here, can you provide more information succinctly on how you decide who will be part of this leadership team from the district?
The critical services and systems will bring their leadership to the table. So I could see that in the case of the school district, it will be potentially the superintendent, board member, and perhaps a staff from the district that would be part of that.
Great, thank you. Second one, under creating a leadership committee outcome in key age ranges, recommend three to five of which will be used ninth through 12th graders to participate in all the following 24 hours of approach and principles series outlined below. How do you plan to get participation and input from those youth that can most benefit and/or have the greatest need for this? I'm going to say dialogue because I wrote program, but I like to do that. So I am listening. So we have these wonderful youth here that participate in everything, but I don't know if those are the ones that we are addressing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I love that. Absolutely. I think, thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing, and I think there's other young people that are leading in their own right. And they might not be the 4.0 students. They might not, but them being at the table is absolutely critical to that, and I trust that the school district knows who those young people are and will invite them to the table as well.
Yeah, and I would recommend not just the people who are doing good in math, but those people who are taking welding, at the farm, other, other non- I'm an engineer. How come I don't know that term? No, 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 that's, that's scientific. Oh my gosh, never mind, it'll come in. Holy cow. It's, no, it's the group of, thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, next question. Approach and principles. Learning community coalition members introduce a philosophy, knowledge, skills, tools, and resources to build a successful coalition and community planning process that aligns with youth development principles and community change. Can you please summarize briefly the philosophy, just let's just stick to philosophy that you are referring to here, not necessarily by name but by theme?
So as I started earlier, I said, youth development is a process, it's an approach, it's a field of research. When we talk about that right there, that's like legalese for this.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, under youth engagement survey and youth voice survey, can you please give an example of topics that will be surveyed? Not specific examples, but themes.
Everything will go back to, how are you experiencing, how are you experiencing relationship building, youth participation? Everything will go right through there. That will be the pipeline for everything.
Are they vague like that, or are they going to specifically dive into-
Oh, I thought you didn't want me to give an example.
Well, no example, but, I mean, are you going to specifically dive into sexual preference? Are you going to be in the family sign? Stop with this. Thank you.
There will be some things that I think the city of Lincoln needs to decide on what information they need to collect, but we'll have a discussion with leadership team, the whole leadership team. What is the critical information that you need to know who you're serving? But here's an example. I'll take one really quick because of time. I could talk to a staff person here if I was upset or mad. One of your members shared last week about a young woman who had been kicked out of her house and she had gone to her school. That was the indicator right there. Why did she go there? I don't think it was about the books on the shelf. I think it was about the connection she had, and that she felt safe there, and she could speak her mind there freely. That's where all this is going through. There's no, nothing else but that pipeline right there.
Thank you, I would agree with that. Thank you. Okay. Youth voice listens, listening circles formed to optimize the listening of key stakeholders as they pay close attention to experiences and feelings and perspectives of specifically targeted and diverse groups of youth. And then the next part of that, capture youth voice through effective questions that capture the reality of the current community climate. Can you please explain what you mean by targeted groups, and then follow that up with what you mean by the reality of current community climate? That is a contrast group.
So we're going to be sitting on some data sets once that survey goes out. What we're going to be sitting is with leadership team and say, "Here's what the data's saying. What we're going to be sitting is with leadership team and say, here's what the data's saying. The questions that we'll take from, from that data, we'll put into the listening circle. The listening circle will be with the parents and guardians, there'll be a parents and guardians listening circle, there'll be a middle school youth listening circle, there'll be a high school listening circle, and then you all might say, like, hey, we also have this group here that we want to hear from them as well, we could provide a listening circle in that area. So when we say targeted, it's going to be specific to those critical age ranges. At the end of this, and maybe this will help trustee Dyxra, this, because at the end of this, the report will be broken down into what that leadership committee comes up to in terms of age ranges. How are we going to do this for the kindergarten? How are we going to do this for the senior? And more than ever, what we're finding out is, how are we going to do this for the 19 through 24-year-old? Because 18 does not mean fully prepared.
So targeted is not a predetermined target? Thank you. So that, that will be determined by those.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Now, this is my last one, this is a biggie.
Okay, I'm ready.
It might be a little harsh, but I'm going to make a statement and ask you a question.
Absolutely.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. The fist icon on the contract, all right? I'd like to address the fist, fist icon on the contract. The bottom line is that this symbol is political and has no business theme on any contract that this district enters into. If a MAGA symbol, donkey, or elephant, or any other political symbol on this, was on this contract, I would be making the same comment. Like it or not, agree or not, the fist is not universally accepted as a unifying symbol. Our students are too fragile as a result of political upheaval and tug-of-war that they have had to witness past few years. And they need our conscious effort to focus back on education and mental health, and to weed out political agendas. And although I believe that the effort can do great things, I cannot give my approval to any contract that contains this or any other polarizing symbol because of my approval of that contract indicates that I agree with everything on that contract and I do not agree with that symbol. Are you willing to remove, are you willing to remove that icon from your contract with Western Placer?
Yeah. It, it is a heavy question. It's, it's a big one. One, this symbol was designed with a group of young people who felt strongly like this, this captures what we believe to be your core value of social justice, to promote inclusion. Our work honors diversity, equal voice, and equal choice for all. It is one of those things where you're asking us to change our core values, and we cannot change our core values. We are who we are. I think there's something to be said about where this thing got polarized, kidnapped, taken out of, I think, you know, this has been around longer than Black Lives Matter or anything. This social justice symbol's been around a very long time.
Since the Marxists and communists.
And, and I could give you some other examples where, where it's used in other ways, but I can also tell you this, on our board, for many, many years, law enforcement was on our board, continues to be a key player. You know, when we think about this work, law enforcement needs to be at the table. The value and the high regard that this organization holds for law enforcement is, is unreal. And those players in law enforcement that work closely with us have never taken an issue with the icons of our, of our core values. They are who we are, those are our core values, and I, I have to share with you, like, I hope that in this last, you know, I don't know, three times 27, that you saw, this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing, and it's inviting everyone to participate at the table in community together in a way that Lincoln hasn't experienced before. And when I think of justice, I think about, every morning, we ask our young people to proudly get in front of that American flag, say the Pledge of Allegiance, and it ends with justice for all. So if justice is the issue, I have an issue with that. If the social part of it is something that we want to talk about more, that's fine, but I've given you the definition of what this means to us, I've given you the definition of who we are. I have, we have a nine-year history with this district, and we have never, ever behaved in a way that should make anyone at this table nervous about any of those things that you just mentioned. It's not who we are. We work in community, we work together to get things done. So I, I just have to share that with you because it, it, it's the truth about YDN and who we are. The last thing I want to share with you is that I, I don't think it's, I think it's scary if we fall into, like, echo chambers. The public square is what this thing is bringing. There used to be a time in this country where we could sit down, and we could be on opposite ends of the aisle, and, you know, Marjorie and I could sit at a chess table at the, at the, and the public square, and we could sit there and play chess and discuss the issues of the day, and even shout at each other sometimes, right? But at the end of the day, one of us would say, I'll see you here next Wednesday, right? And I'd be like, absolutely. I think this is what it takes. We need to hear the opinions, the thoughts, and the beliefs of everyone to move forward together. There's nothing wrong with that at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no questions. Thank you. We'll move to comments. We'll start with Kristin Noriega.
Ooh, it's nerve-wracking standing up here. Okay, so my name is Kristin Noriega. This is my 17th year here as an educator in Western Placer. During my career, I've tried exclusively at Fossett Ranch Elementary School in second kinder and now fourth grade. While I already mentioned the word career, being a teacher is much more than just a job for me. I am passionate about teaching and education in general. Without a doubt, there are moments that forever stay with you as an educator and keep us doing the hard job day in and day out. It is about the students' learning and seeing that moment when a challenging concept clicks. It is about the connections that I have made with students over the years. It is about watching past students enter into the world outside of WPUSD and being able to meet the challenges of the real world with the skills that they learn academically as well as socially and emotionally while being students in Western Placer. This is what makes teaching all worth it. Over the years, the box curriculum sets have changed, the learning benchmarks have changed, consider California State standards now to Common Core standards, and more importantly, our students have changed. Our students are coming to school with, with much more trauma and challenging backgrounds than ever before. It has become increasingly more difficult to meet the needs of our student population while also ensuring that all of our students feel safe and ready to learn. While it could go on and on, we may be asking, you may be asking, what any of this has to do with YDN? And I'm here to tell you that it's not only an incredible dialogue, it is for our students, but also how it was life-changing for me when I went through it. Even though I already had over a dozen years of teaching under my belt at that point when I was trained, I learned an extensive amount of new tools and new ways to interact with my students that I was able to take back to the classroom the next day. YDN is not just a program, a dialogue, because it has widespread impact on teachers, staff, students, parents, which has been a big topic in the community. In my opinion, it equips teachers with the most valuable skills in order to positively interact with their students, and also give teachers the tools necessary in order to prepare students for their entire educational career as well as into adulthood. The program has three main focuses, connectedness, preparation, and opportunities. During, during the training, we learn the value of building relationships with students, connectedness, the importance of creating lessons which are high interest, equity-driven, and relevant to students' lives, preparation, and also the value of critical and critical nature of teaching students that they are the future and can create change for a better future for themselves and everyone around them, the opportunities. Relationships are the building blocks of a positive classroom and school environment. Students must feel that their teachers, principals, school support staff, parents, and even community members not only care about them and want them to succeed, but are also willing to build the relationships with them in order to make those connections lifelong. Students must feel that teachers believe that they are not only capable of learning, but also that every teacher is willing to take the time to ensure that all students, regardless of the challenges they may encounter, can and will learn. In order to build these relationships, students, teachers must take the time to get to know their students. What are their likes and dislikes? What is their home life like? What are the things that bring them joy? What are their fears? Why do they come to school sad or withdrawn? Is there something a teacher or staff member can do to support them? This is what we focus on, and this is literally every day for us. As we all know, Rita Pearson, and if you don't...
Kristin, we have about 10 seconds.
I'm hurrying. There's a very important quote that she says, children don't learn from people they don't like, and that is why relationships are key. It is our jobs as educators to prepare our children, our students, to be critical thinkers. As the world is ever-changing, it is our responsibility to teach them not only that we can only learn and be better in the future if we don't repeat the past.
Kristin, I'm going to have to pick you up. We have 10 more. Thank you.
Okay.
Symphony McGuire?
All right. I'm Tiffany McGuire. I'm a fifth-grade teacher here at Carlin, or here at Carlin's Cappin. I wanted to share with you just my experience with the YDN network, with the, I went to the YDA Institute, or YDI, anyway. And so I want, I love that they brought the graphic for you because I can succinctly remember the first day, and I, in fact, I brought the same exact graphic that I brought from the training. I attended the training back in 2018, right before I started my first year full-time teaching in the classroom. This, this training has been instrumental in making me the teacher that I am today. It has made all the difference in how I look at my kids, how I treat my students, everything, every decision that I make is built on this tower, with safety being the first and the most important thing that I need to do to make sure that my children feel safe. I know that the first thing that they do when they do the training is they go and they pull out that box, that safety box. What happens when you pull out safety? Everything else comes toppling. You, the kids cannot do any of those other items that are on top of that box if they don't feel safe when they walk in your classroom. I spent, I spent the first two weeks of my classroom only working with building that safety in my classroom, building that community. This year, I did that through morning meetings. It has been incredible, and an incredible change in my classroom. From there, I built those relationships. The kids trust me, they trust each other, they're willing to take risks, they're willing to make changes to, for the better of the classroom. Now we've moved into that youth participation. My students, my fifth graders are now running my morning meetings in the mornings now. They're the ones, and they have been asked to go over and take what we've been doing to Glenn Edwards and show the sixth-grade teachers what we're doing at Glenn Edwards, and what we're doing in our fifth-grade classroom, having these fifth graders do a morning meeting with these other parents. And then from there, we're, I love the idea of that community involvement, of the city of Lincoln coming together with Western Placer and making this really incredible partnership, and growing this into what it can be. And then after all of that, where we spend like 99% of our energy, or what it feels like, is the skill building, teaching, teaching these kids how to learn, right? And the whole idea is, is that once we've done all of those other blocks, that's when the real learning happens, and that's when those kids are going to trust you, that's when those kids are going to not care if they totally jack up on that math test, I'll be like, dude, Miss McGuire, I totally sucked at that. And then I go, you know what? But you made mistakes, and you're going to grow from it. And the whole point is that they trust me enough that they know that they're going to make massive mistakes, and they're going to screw up, and they're going to be okay. And so with that, I just wanted to share, I found this when I was going through my training materials, and one of the activities you do is you create what is your story. And this is what I created for my story, and it was everything that was important to me and led me to be a teacher in the classroom where I am now. And it's incredible that, I mean, I teach at Carlin's Cappin, I know that there are about a bazillion things that need to happen over there, and you know what? I don't care. This is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gus.
I said Gus.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said Gus, not Kristin.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, you already started. I don't, I don't have boxes to put up on the table, but I would like to offer one piece of common sense that I think keeps getting missed in the state of California and abroad, and that is that you will never, ever bring children to a place of equality by continually reminding them that there is inequality. It is a logical fallacy, it has never worked. And if you've been doing this for nine years, and then you go on to say that the kids are in the worst place they've been in, you can see where the logic fails pretty quickly there. I realize that certain funds are allocated, you know, for certain types of buildings and whatnot, but I do want to mention that I just listened to funding issues about portables and other things before we started talking about $52,000 to the YDN and $52,000 from the city as well. And I just want to say that I don't think this is purely about Adrian or the YDN or his institute. The deeper issue is that there's trust, there's trust issues. And why is that? Because the last time I saw this many union teachers in one place, they were walking out on students because the students didn't want to wear their mask anymore. All right? So forgive me if I see this many unionized teachers in a room, and I'm not exactly thrilled about it. I'm sure you do great things in the classroom.
Gus, can you stop for a second?
Yeah.
Like, can we please allow the speaker to speak without comment? Thank you. Go ahead, Gus.
And I know that teaching is hard, just like going to the Middle East and fighting for the country is hard, and I respect that, and I continually praise teachers in the classroom. But when you show up in unity like this, I, I get scared. I get scared of the cozy relationship that you have with the district, and I get scared of the fact that despite Marjorie, as a parent, holding up all the signs, showing all the signs that something wasn't right, we continue to say, there's nothing we can do, Gus. Maybe we agree with you. The principals say, there's nothing we can do. So I, I do believe that what's happening is we are now scared to pull the trigger from outside influences, even if it's well-meaning. That, that's part of the problem, because I've never attended the Youth Development Network or the Institute, pardon me, and, and I'm probably, I'm pretty sure some good does come from it. But I do remember the memorandum of understanding between the CTA and this district from 2020, 2021, I read it. And I do remember the teachers walking out at Glenn Edwards and abroad. I haven't forgotten, okay? So you can hate me if you want, I understand that, I do. But I, I want to finish by clarifying that I shouldn't even have to do this. But I've never voted for Donald Trump, and I never will. I don't like the guy, not even a conservative. I'm a constitutionalist, and I will always show up, and have shown up for years, when I believe that children are in danger or the parents' constitutional freedoms are in danger. And I also have a lot of questions about the social justice pieces on YDN's Our Tribe podcast that are continually brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Are you happy?
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Jennifer Horton?
Good evening, Western Placer School Board. My name is Jennifer Horton, and I am your college and career coordinator for the entire school district. And I am also a Youth Development Institute trainer. And so during the last board meeting, you asked for more information about YDN. You received a lot of that information this evening. Adrian spoke about the five supports and opportunities. Another piece that I would like to offer is about the 40 developmental assets that we use through YDN, and that's looking at the developmental assets that we hope all individuals will have, but unfortunately, not everybody will have all 40. But the more you do have, the more likely you are to becoming a productive member of community. And so one of the things with YDN and those that go through the training, they learn how to build those relationships, provide safety, participation, community involvement, and then, of course, the skill building. One of the things we've learned is that one adult in a youth's life can make a huge difference, can make a difference between that youth choosing to go down an unhealthy path versus a healthy path. Case in point, Miss Heather. She was the lunch lead at Lincoln High School. She's now at Pearl Bridges High School, but earlier in the year, we were short-staffed, they needed help, I ran down to Lincoln High School, I'm helping her get ready for lunch, and then few kids start trickling in. And these kids did not look happy. Their heads were down, solemn face, just, some of them looked down like angry. When they came up to get their lunch, Miss Heather said, hello, Jessica, how are you today? Hey, Ricky, how are you doing? How's that new puppy? Rebecca, I know your mom's not feeling so well. Is she doing better this week? Those students perked up, stood taller, had a smile on their face, and participated in a conversation with Miss Heather. She built safety with them, relationships, involved them in participation, built a school community, and let me tell you, that safety part on a high school at lunchtime, that's not easy. But she did it. She was amazing. So, Western Placer School Board members, when you approve funding for youth development, you are providing, for our youth, all of them, TK-12, you are providing support for them to become happy, healthy, productive members of our community.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just have a few things to say. I am Stephanie Mall, I teach kindergarten at Scott Lehman Elementary, and I'm also a YDN trainer for our district. And the first thing I want to point out is that there is nothing else in this job that you can have a kindergarten teacher trained to teach high school teachers as well. So this, this approach applies to preschool all the way through our community. Like, I would love to see all of you guys come to our next training, and I, I think that that was offered, and it would be super amazing. It changes the dynamic of the training when there's community members, and it changes the dynamic when there are students present, and it's super awesome. The other thing I want to share, which, when I went through the training, and I was one of the first groups to go to, is that the most impactful thing that was, that I took is that the most impactful thing that was, that I took away from that first training is that these supports and opportunities are available other places. There's other places where students can find safety, build relationships, have people support them. It's called the game. So if we don't come together as a community and provide these for our youth, they will find it. What I heard tonight, when each of you shared your stories about what you've done over the last two weeks, you did this. I saw it right here. You and you have a relationship now. If you see her on the street, you are not gonna walk by her. You're gonna say, hi, how's it going? How's your class? Right? You guys who go to the basketball games, even if you're not making a direct connection with them, you see those kids. You're gonna know when you see the McDonald's, hey, that kid's on the basketball team. Maybe you'll even stop and say, how's the game last night? Right? And what are we building? These supports and opportunities so they don't have to go find it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Armstead. I'm a high school teacher at Lincoln High School and agriculture teacher specializing in floral design. But tonight, I come to you as a YDN trainer. I've been training with WP USC for a lot of years now. And the training that we're offering to our WP USC family is an amazing opportunity for every single member of our district. Not just teachers, not just students, but administrative staff and classified staff as well. The training transforms a diverse group of elementary school teachers, high school teachers, high school students, administration and classified staff into a tight-knit family after just four days. Participants are building community, developing relationships in a safe and interactive environment. We as facilitators witness this, and we see it over and over with every new training. A group of adults and students morphing together into one family in a matter of four days sounds pretty great. But it gets better because the YDI participants take these strategies and knowledge gained in the trainings to their school sites. They leave train, they leave the training excited, start implementing YDI in their classrooms, staff groups, and student organizations. The transformation that we see is unreal. It's important to note that while YDI practice is very effective in a classroom setting, it's hugely effective for adult groups as well. Whether it's the school faculty, cafeteria staff, custodial staff, and beyond, adults benefit tremendously from implementing YDI strategies with their staff. We've been including a small group of selected high school students in our trainings for the past few years. And the students start off a little bit nervous, and actually so did the adults. But the dialogue that starts to emerge between students and adults in our training is absolutely incredible. They leave the training with a connection and an appreciation for each other that flows into our school sites. There's still members of our WP USC family that have not been YDI trained. We still have a lot of work to do. I ask that you please continue to support our efforts in training our entire district at our Youth Development Institute. And if allowed to continue, I would like to personally invite all of our board members to participate in our summer YDI trainings and experience the transformation for yourselves. Thank you for your time.
Laura Stanley?
Hello. My name is Laura Stanley. I teach English and creative writing at Lincoln High School. I'm also the head swim coach, one of the head swim coaches. I am also a YDI trainer. I'm here tonight because I feel strongly about how YDI has positively impacted my own personal teaching practices and the district as a whole. So for starters, through the YDN I have experienced, I've learned how to involve my students in the decision-making process in the classroom. At the beginning of the school year, and this school year I did this, I asked my students, what do you need from yourself to have the best year possible? What do you need from your peers and what do you need from me? I don't give them rules, you will do this, you will do this, you will do this, right? I start by building safety, and I ask them, what do you need to have the best year possible? This is what they came up with this year. From their peers, they need humor and fun. They need maturity, respect, communication, and kindness. From themselves, they came up with, and this was not driven by me, this was student-driven. From themselves, they need, their number one was, for myself to have the best senior year, I need to take care of myself, I need to get sleep. I need to eat healthy, I need to have balance in my life. They also said from themselves, I needed time management. They needed to be disciplined, motivated, and to get involved. And then I asked them, what do you need from me? So I, I asked them to participate in the process with me. What do you need from me? They said that we need you to be approachable, to give us clear instructions, to be understanding, to support us, and to have a fun and safe environment. And so I, I put these on the overhead a couple times a month, and we review them. We reviewed them today. I said, how are we doing? Were you doing good with this? Were you okay? What do you need from me? What do you need from yourself? What do you need from your peers? The other thing, because I have gone through this process and I'm embedded in these ideas of building safety and relationship building first, I have an idea, and my idea has changed, of what does it mean to be a good teacher? Right? I kind of have this idea in my, in my head. And I, and I don't know if that fully matches what the students say. So I asked them, I said, fill in this sentence. A good, finish this sentence, a good teacher blank. And I didn't tell them why I was asking them. I just said, fill in, finish the sentence, a good teacher blank. So here's what some of the funny responses. Lets us take naps. Gives us snaps. Snaps are really popular. But lets the students have a slumber while the teacher gives us a small four-course meal. Okay? So those were the joke answers, right? But, but, excuse me. Okay. This is what most of them said. They actively connect with their students. A good teacher knows how to talk to their students, treats us like adults, pushes us to be our best, gives us brain breaks, makes learning fun and engaging, has communication skills, is friendly and interactive, can create hope, ignite the imagination, and inspire our love of learning, and has a good relationship with their students. And the last student said, teaches more than just the school curriculum. Two students said, a good teacher sticks to the content. Two out of a hundred and thirty-five. Because, yep, thank you.
Morning, or good evening, rather. I'm sorry, I've worked three weeks without a day off. My name is Gary McJohn, I'm the executive director of Light House Counseling and Family Resource Center. I can tell you right now, there's not enough counselors out there to deal with the mental health issues that the children are facing. Since the pandemic, we've seen a forty percent increase in suicidal ideation in the children that we're seeing. We see about forty-five hundred people per year, over half of them are under the age of eighteen. We are losing our children, we are literally losing our children because we lost engagement because of the pandemic. DYI is exactly what you need right now to re-engage these children. We have about a fourteen-week waitlist for counseling for people, including the children as well. If we know they're suicidal, we bring them in right away. We called up a family, and we said, we have a spot open for your child. The parents began to cry on the phone. They said their child had already taken his life. He was eleven years old. We are literally losing our children. Please don't let a logo get in front of the opportunity to engage your children at a deeper level. This is serious. Please consider accepting this proposal because we don't want to lose any more children. Thank you for your time.
Hi. I just want to thank you all. I know what you do is a lot of work, and it's not easy. I am coming here as an eighteen-year resident of Lincoln. I guess I should say it that way. I am a mother of five. Well, I'm not just, he's, he's part of this. He's part of the problem. We have five children, and we have eight grandchildren. And we don't have any kids at home anymore, but we have a lot of grandkids. And we have three that live here. And this community is very near and dear to our hearts, and we've put our heart and soul into living here and being a part of this community. I want to hit on suicide prevention because it's hit our family. And I am a child loss survivor, my husband and I. And my son went to Lincoln High School. We had three out of our five children go to Lincoln. I was so not gonna cry tonight. Three out of our five children went to Lincoln High School and went through Creekside Elementary and Glenn Edwards. And so we are ingrained in this community. Two other families in Lincoln lost their sons. We all lost our sons within weeks of each other's son, or days. None of the suicides are related. It's not like it was a domino effect, but we pulled ourselves together to grieve together and created a nonprofit organization, Mud Run for Life. And let me tell you what, you talk about the problem with the pandemic, all of that. My son, our son, had no symptoms, no signs, no weather. He had everything going for him. He had a good, strong family, and a loving family. And we didn't know he was suffering at all. He had nothing that would indicate that. Our, our mission as living here in this community is to continue to, for the rest of our life, till we have our last breath come out of us, talk about mental health and what it is, how important it is in this community. And this program, which I can see by everything I've read and heard tonight, will help with that. And if it can save one life, one, it'd be worth it. And I happen to personally know, because I know that our mud runs, how many of you have been to our mud runs? Anybody in this room? Absolutely, and thank you for your love and support. I personally know eight people who have not taken their life because we decided to speak out and talk about it. And if you don't talk about it, then you're not gonna know. You've got to, you've got to talk about it. It's not gonna cost somebody to be suicidal because you're talking about it. Trust me, if they have had those thoughts, they've thought about it for probably a while. So, you know, as a leader in this community, I've been a cheer coach from junior zebras all the way up through the high school. So now we haven't had a student in Lincoln for seventeen, nineteen. Holy cow, our youngest graduated seven years ago. How did this happen? Seven years ago. But we're still all about our community. So my efforts myself, outside of even the mud run families, we are all very active in this. I still go over to the high school every year, and I beat the living snot out of the football team at Lincoln High School with a boot camp. And then I sit them all down and I tell them my story. I tell them my story, and I ask them, what are you gonna do if you see somebody hurting or needing something? I want you to, as leaders, because you're leaders, because everyone's looking at you. They're watching you. They watch what you do, what you say, how you act, how you treat others. I want you, for one week, to seek out people who might need some friends. You might see somebody alone at a table. You never know what they're going through. And I do the same thing with the cheerleaders. I'd love to do it with all of the kids. I'm totally up for that, I might never sleep. But, but they respond, like, they literally open up and respond. I put them in groups, and I have them discuss with each other. And I ask them, hey, anybody in this group been a bully before? And they all sit here like this for a few seconds, and then I'm like, get real. Everybody put your hands up. Somebody said something rude to someone before. And then I ask them, have you been bullied? Every hand went up, every single hand. So it's not just about bullying, but it's about literally getting more information out there to these kids and having them network with everyone else like you're doing here to be inclusive and see if everybody's okay, check on people. If you have an adult in your life, outside of parents, yes. Outside of parents, hey, I'm gonna tell you right here now. Anybody else want to love my kids, even though they're all grown up? Please, please love them.
I hope you didn't mind that I let her go. Okay, so could we have a motion? And then we'll have discussion.
Oh yeah, I'd move the item forward for sure.
Yes. I second. Okay. And now we're open for discussion.
You go ahead and start.
Anybody not crying over there? I personally know Kelly, so, yeah.
I think for me, I get it, I do, I understand. I understand the political division, and I understand how we have a responsibility to participate in that. And I agree with you. I think, I don't think it's the point in this particular document. And there's probably some risk in it to move forward. But I think you're hearing that this is a resource for our staff. This has been talked about as a curriculum for youth, and I don't think it's that. I think it's tools to help our staff show up and meet kids wherever they have to be. It's your fault. On personal note, and I've shared this, period. I lost my dad when I was eight. And I showed him at school, a mess, like, mean and aggressive and hard to love. And I would go home to a mom who drank all day because she didn't know what to do. So whether they liked it or not, they owned me for a day. And the least we can do is make sure that they have what they need to at least understand what's going on. Because my sixth grade teacher saved my life, say it all the time. She was just the right thing. She was just the right thing. She had high expectations, and she didn't let me screw around. And everybody else did. Everybody else was like, oh, God, your dad did that. I don't even know what to do with that. She was like, I get it, you're sad, you need a minute, take a minute, and then come back in, but you're not gonna act a fool. Because that wasn't good for anybody. And I'll tell you, I needed that more than anything. And I don't know if she met Adrian, maybe she did. But somehow this woman that rode a motorcycle to school figured out how to be just the mix of loving and firm. And I think we have to make sure that the staff members have every resource we can make available to them so that they will spot who's being a jerk and who's hurt. And I think that's important, and I see that in this work. And then the very last thing I want to say is, you know, I'm the safety guy, and I'm telling you, do any research at all. Pick any federal organization, and they say, do you want to prevent violence in schools? Build a strong culture. That is hard to articulate, probably harder to do, but man, I think it's everything. And I think if you pull a program like this out, we move backwards. And this could be the worst time, I can't think of any worse, any more worse a time than now, to say, let's back off because we're a little bit nervous. I think that we, we have to move forward and trust that this process will continue to give us the results we have.
I'll go. Now that I.
I'll do it.
So, and, you know, with this question, I had some questions, and I've actually reached out to a couple of my friends that are teachers and staff within the district. And I've talked to them about, you know, a couple of them spoke here tonight about how they are instructors. And the core thing that really hit me every time, every person I spoke with, was they're building relationships with those children. And what hit my mind was, we were down at that conference in San Diego in November, was the peanut speaker was down that one person, be the one. And mental health is huge. And mental health is huge in our community over the last several years, well, in the country. But especially the last two years, three years have hit our children extremely hard. And I don't think taking away this program will benefit them at all. I think we need to keep this program. And I think it's even going to get better because we will have the community environment as well. Are you something that we can afford to take away from our kids when their mental health is in question?
Dialogue.
Dialogue, sorry.
Yeah, I just, all the people that spoke this evening, I, I want to, I wish I could shake all of your hands. It meant an awful lot to me to hear from you, people that are doing the day-to-day work. And it was extremely impressive and it's going to help shape my decision. And thank you so much for taking an evening and coming out and, and helping us further understand this. Thank you.
So anybody else have anything before I talk?
Oh.
Go ahead, tell me.
Thanks for making me cry, Jason. I didn't need that tonight.
Kelly started.
He makes us laugh, he makes us cry.
Um, I'm trying to like figure out how to word what I'm trying to say. But I have been dealing with bad mental health since I was in kindergarten. I've been dealing with death and just everything going wrong throughout my family. And I was, and all the way through elementary school and middle school, I was just the kid with really bad ADHD that didn't know how to behave. I didn't have the good teachers who actually, actually listened to me until I got to Phoenix High School. And my teacher is Ms. Kirsty McQueen. She listens to me every night, or every day, I mean. Even though sometimes I can tell she gets really annoyed. But I'm using her as my example because she, and I have many students at this school who can back me up on this. She is the person that all the students can go to because she listens to us. And I have never had that kind of support from someone before. And to be able to have a teacher who understands my story is amazing. And so I, I know that my vote doesn't count, but I definitely think we should vote yes on this.
Okay, so the Teacher of the Year this year, Mr. Kelly Ward. I was very excited to hear that he was receiving this award because personally, he's one of my favorite teachers that I've ever had. And that is for a reason. Because he aligns a lot with this dialogue, like things that he's done for me and for his students. He said hello and goodbye to each and every student by name when they walked in and walked out of his classroom, every day, every single student, never missed a kid. And I thought it was really weird at first because no teacher ever addressed me specifically. Every single time I walked in the room, I was like, "Hi." But, I lost my place. He made every single student feel seen and heard and you knew that he knew you and he noticed you. And he noticed when a student was sad or upset. And he, he asked me one day, just, "How are you doing?" And I was like taken aback by the question because in fifteen years of living and ten years of going to school, no one had ever, no teacher had ever asked me how I was doing. You know, teachers ask me if I have questions about the assignment or if I did the homework, but not, "How are you doing?" And since then, a few teachers, including Mr. Ward and Mrs. Mary McQueen and Mr. Florence, last year's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Terajene and Mr. Wardlaw, have asked me questions like that and connected with me on a personal level. The teachers that I just named are my favorite teachers that I've ever had. I like going to their classes. I'm engaged with them. I want to learn from them. I feel safe in their classrooms and I feel like they care about what I have to say. They believe that I'm intelligent and they want me to participate. And they believe that I have great potential. And so I just think that ultimately, taking away this dialogue will benefit absolutely no one. So, yeah, that's kind of all.
All right, I didn't know I was speaking until just about now. I had my first psychiatry appointment today. I've, this is something I've been struggling with for the last, as much as I can remember. And it's something that I've continuously asked for help with. And the problem is there's not enough resources. There aren't enough therapists to help people. It's weighted based on how much we're struggling. And I don't appear to struggle. I get good grades and that's, that's good. People, it should be prioritized of people who need help. But we can't afford to take away the little bit of things that people get in day-to-day life. The teachers who ask me how I am, that does make an impact in my day. And taking this away is taking away one more person that can help. And it's just not something we can afford to lose.
So, so thank you, Jason, for bringing up that there's a risk. And, and I'll ask the board here, if this passes today, are we willing to keep and really kind of check back with this to make sure that some of the things we are concerned of don't, I mean, are, are within what the board agrees should be happening in this dialogue, in the surveys, in stuff like that? Is there a mechanism for us to be briefed?
Yeah, I mean.
As much as we want, publicly, of course, right?
Absolutely.
Can I say something? This isn't, from what I spoke with Carrie about this last night, why do you think it's for the teachers? So this is for our community leaders.
Right.
So to get the same kind of teaching that, that's what has changed my mind about. Because we're asking people in the community to come in.
Right.
You know, they're all going to sit and go through it and help our kids.
Right.
And the community leaders that have been chosen, I've spoken with several of them. They're not interested in activism. They're interested in engaging and mentoring.
But, but as a board, are we willing to, to ask the hard questions and keep, just like, like, you know?
The surveys.
Jason, you put it perfectly. There is a risk and we have to weigh that. What, what's that like? Are we willing to sit on some of the, some of the, because the committees and we come and report back and be vocal?
Yeah, and I would like all of us to go through the training.
Yes, I think that would be extremely important.
That all of us?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you don't have to go with death.
No. I'll go with you. I'll go with all four of you. I would love that.
But, you know, I just want to leave on the table that I do have concerns about that I want. They don't, and I'm talking to the board, they don't, they don't feel it belongs anywhere on a contract with us. And I will continue to vocalize that, but I do, I'm not, I'm not dipped on this topic here. And so anyways, Adrian, I want to thank you for coming and, and briefing the board. And for everyone who spoke, I don't, I know these are topics that we can't always agree on, but that's all I have to say. Was there any more discussion? Okay, we have motion and a second roll call?
It's, it's not a roll call.
It's not a roll call?
No.
Because, okay.
Yeah.
About that time.
Great.
All right. All right. Oh, so.
Me, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call post. Thank you. We're going to take a recess because some people up here need to buy a break.
All right, so we're back. A second. Thank you for everyone who came to break with us and allow us to do a little time. We'll move to seven point three on presentation on dyslexia.
I wanted to start off by saying that we are so happy and grateful to be invited today to talk about dyslexia. We, as the district and staff members here, take leading very seriously to include dyslexia. Before we get started, I'm Emily Martinez, Director of Special Education.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I'm Emily Ortiz, MTSS Coordinator, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Sorry.
Just some parking lot. You guys have our slides. There's a lot of information that we're hoping you can use for your reference. We're not going to touch on all of it. It flows for you guys to really absorb. So we'll go ahead and get started. Emily, go ahead. Slide pusher. So we're going to start with just an outline. We're going to talk about some terms. I'm going to give you some reading facts. I have heard that you guys have received facts in previous meetings. A lot of you should probably be the same. We're going to have some information about how dyslexia looks in the classroom and what academic skills we target when you have concerns with dyslexia. We're going to talk about the MTSS system, which is really just a school-wide system on how we respond to student needs when kids aren't learning as we would expect. We're going to talk about those tiers of support. We're going to talk about what we're currently doing and what we have been planning all year on how to add to those systems. And then we're going to talk about special education, which is part of the MTSS system. It's just way up at the top. So first thing is just the definition of dyslexia. This is defined by the International Dyslexia Association and it's adopted by some pretty major organizations in the rest of the country. I'm not going to go over the whole definition, but I have underlined the academic impacts that we look for in the classroom, which include accurate and or fluid word recognition, force spelling, disability abilities. And they have it deficit in the form of a complement of language. So some reading facts. This is just a general reading fact, not necessarily a fact on dyslexia. There are certain things that we develop as people that our brains are pre-wired to do, like language. All of our brains are pre-wired to learn a language. Reading is not something that is pre-wired in our brains. It has to be directly and explicitly taught. So we're just going to talk about how difficult it is to learn to read the English language. So there are forty-four sounds in the English language. We apply those sounds in two hundred and eighty different ways. And our spelling patterns are made up of four different languages. So sometimes the e's at the end because the English-Saxon rule applies there. Sometimes the e's at the end because it's a French word. So our non-dyslexic brains have a, have a hard time figuring out those rules. So I'm sure you can imagine how that's.
Sometimes it feels like the e's at the end for no reason.
There's a language that describes it, we just don't know. So I'm sure you can imagine how the dyslexic brain is going to struggle even more. So some reading facts that I know you guys have received in the past is talking about acquiring reading at certain grade levels, which is difficult, which is required in order to make some progress in reading. But I wanted to focus on the second two bullet points, which really do we talk about some research where it's looked at early screening and identifying students who are at risk of symptoms that are associated with dyslexia, how they do make significant improvements when we provide them intervention, even in the general education environment. Some districts, all they did was provide systematic and explicit instruction in reading and then they educated their staff on what's called the science of reading. And their reading proficiency increased from forty-seven percent to eighty-four percent. All they did was provide an explicit curriculum and trained their teachers on the science of reading. And their reading proficiency went from forty-seven percent to eighty-four percent. So additional facts that I think are just really crucial, maybe the first one. Third grade reading proficiency is really a big marker. Kids who aren't proficient in reading by the end of third grade are less likely to graduate on time. And reading proficiency at the end of third grade is a bigger marker of that than poverty. So just so you understand, you are reading proficient when you're at first grade, but you live in a impoverished environment, you are more likely to graduate on time than if you are not creating a poverty and you are not reading at proficiency at third grade. So third grade reading is really a marker. Also, it takes four times as long to intervene in fourth grade than it does in kindergarten.
Yes.
And then I do know that you guys have the stat on the last bullet that ninety percent of individuals in person actually are functional. So some additional reading facts that I know that you guys have. Fifteen percent of the population of the world is believed to display some symptoms of dyslexia, but not all of them require special education. Nationwide, thirteen to fourteen percent of our youth qualify for what's called an IEP, that's a student qualified for special education. Half of those students are eligible under what's called specific learning disability. That's the eligibility criteria that we use federally for students with learning disabilities. Eighty-five percent of those students qualify because they have a reading disability. I think that there is some notion that dyslexia is rare. It's just not a term that we use a lot in education, but you'll see that the reading disabilities actually have quite common. So the next part that we're going to talk about is we need just the systems that we utilize in education on how we tier up our supports to identify kids. And the first two tiers are the general education side of it. And then I'm going to be back around to talk about how we address those kids in special education.
So the first part is just defining what MTSS is. So it is a multi-tiered system of support. It is a systematic framework, really, that's data-driven. And there are strategic systems that are used at the entire school. They use the whole school site as a whole. So there's tier, tiers of intervention. Tier one is considered prevention and that's all students. Tier two is intervention. There's some students. And then renunciation is tier three. And there are all of those areas. So this again, tier one is essentially the core curriculum. It's what's being taught that all students are exposed to. And currently, in our tier one, we are using research-based versus instruction, differentiated instruction using structured literacy programs. So some of those are listed there. We're currently, we have professional development in many areas. We send out a monthly newsletter from special education with information that's specifically related to dyslexia. There's a monthly newsletter from educational specialists with information related to literacy. We have formed an instructional excellence committee whose focus is literacy. So those are some of our things that we're currently doing. And the things that we're actively developing is an ed services team. There's quite a large team that's working on this. So we are working on screening protocols related to areas associated with dyslexia and hopefully including incoming TK and K students. We are piloting Orton-Gillingham at one of our school sites. All of our sites are identifying the essential skills identified in, in the area of literacy. There is professional development being developed related to the science of reading. And we are currently piloting the phonics portion of a program called Hegarty, which is a systematic and exclusive reading supplement to the core instruction. So tier two is that some group. So it's additional services provided for some students. You just layer it on. You don't get rid of tier one. You just layer on extra services as needed according to the data that we're looking at. Current practice, we do small group interventions. We have site-based interventions that specialized teams sometimes is a part of as well. Multi-tiered system of support systems at all primary schools. So that's a team of people that are looking at data on every single kid in the, in the school. And they're talking about those students weekly and progress monitoring them to make sure that they're getting all the supports that they need. We do have full-time school psychologists at all elementary schools and they are part of that MTSS team and part of the meetings every week. We have extended learning opportunities at Title I schools. And there's extra aid support in kinder and first grade. We are developing structured intervention time for TK and K students, extended learning opportunities for all TK and K, summer school intervention options, and then creating action teams to create system-level processes and procedures. So action teams would include school members, teachers from all levels. And then we get to tier three.
So, so imagine you go through tier one, you receive your instruction, you're still struggling. We collect some data, we put you in some intervention groups. That doesn't work for us, disrupt them. So then you go up to tier three, which is the TIP, TIP, TIP. It's usually when special education is discussed as an option. And in order to receive special educational services, you do have to be assessed by the special department. There are a lot of laws and regulations behind it that we follow to comply with. So this is just the eligibility ed code again. I'm not going to revisit. Like I mentioned before, we don't have the term. Like I mentioned before, we don't have the term dyslexia as an eligibility criteria. It is under what's called specific learning disability, but you will see in ed code. The word dyslexia is referenced just to give us specific guidance on where you would look to find a student eligible if you have concerns with dyslexia. And then how you qualify for special education. Things have changed. We used to assess students, I'd say about five years ago, where we would essentially give a student a cognitive battery, where we would determine where a kid's thinking skills are, and then we would measure their achievement scores, and there would have to be this really big gap. The gap would have to be 22 points. The model was called, I think it was like the Failure to Learn Model, because in order to get that 22 points, you would have to be roughly two grades behind in order for that 22 points to equal out. And then we also did have to find a reason why, a processing deficit as to why you weren't learning. And so things have changed. We now do what's called patterns of strengths and weaknesses, which really just means that we're looking at all of the ways in which you can process information, and we're finding cognitive weaknesses, and we're trying to associate that with an academic weakness. There still has to be a statistically significant difference. You have to be learning less than what we predict, but it doesn't have to be that significant 22 points that we used to have to meet that threshold before. The support that we use, keeping in mind that we collect information through assessment, we identify areas of need, we have to draft very specific goals, and then we provide a service recommendation. The programs that are used in the area, there was certain legislation that was passed that did require the curriculum that we used had to meet certain requirements and benchmarks. And so the three programs that are used in the area are Sande, Barton Reading, and Wilson Reading. We use Sande's. There isn't loads of peer-reviewed large studies that talk about the effectiveness of any of these programs. That was my hope, that I could bring you complete data on these programs. There is a really high standard in order for you to be considered a peer-reviewed, double-blind type of research article. But I don't want that to negate the effectiveness of all of these programs. There are small research articles that have come out that do talk about the effectiveness of all of these programs. We do provide training for Sande. The training is provided annually for teachers who are new to our district. As they get hired on, we get them set up with training, and then we even have some older teachers who are receiving some advanced training who will have a business in that. And so the last slide is just really another downer of statistics. And I hate to leave you with this, but I wanted to let you know that in 2022, the national achievement levels, as indicated by the National Reading Panel, indicated that 63% of fourth graders performed at or above basic levels in reading nationwide, and only 33% of our fourth graders nationwide were considered proficient. I did provide you with our data from last year for Western Placer, and you'll see it's higher than 33%. And I think what's really important to note here as well, we are so happy to be here to talk about dyslexia and what that looks like in education. I think this is more, we have a reading problem throughout the country to include Western Placer per our data. And I think what's really, really important to note is that we are changing the way that we view these types of learning struggles and making it more of a system response as opposed to the TIP top as being a response. We have significant experts in reading, in the teachers that we have in this district. Some of them are here in this room tonight. We also have leaders at the top who have been very, very clear that the goal for this district is that all third graders be third grade proficient in reading. That is our long-term goal. And so we are, I believe, the way in which we are moving to approach reading is really forward-thinking and using the system to respond to learning and reading challenges. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
If you have any questions.